This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. On June 21st, the Town Council voted to continue meeting virtually until September 1st, 2021. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the June 28th, 2021 meeting of the Amherst Town Council to order at 6:37. I will now call on each councillor to make sure that they can hear me and we can hear them. And please make sure you then mute your mic again. I'm going to start with Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Darcy Demont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Here.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Thank you, and Shalene Bell Miller is not present at the moment. Okay. This meeting includes audio, video, and is available live from Amherst Media. It is also being recorded. There's no chat room. If you have technical issues, please let us know. The information on the screen tells those in the audience, especially on Amherst Media, how to connect and later on, how to make public comment, which includes pressing star nine. If you have difficulties, please let Athena and I know so that we can make a record of that and determine if we need to pause the meeting until you reconnect. The announcements. We have a couple of upcoming town council. We have an upcoming town council meeting on July 12th. At this point, that is our only town council meeting in July. And then we have meetings of various committees of the council, including a special meeting of the Community Resources Committee, which will be in the town room. And that is regarding a public hearing of the zoning of parcel 14A-33.
Um Lynn?
Yes.
That is a regular meeting of the CRC that happens to have a public hearing at it. It's not just a special meeting.
Thank you. So it's both a regular meeting and a public hearing.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections to the meetings that are up here? Then we're going to go on to general public comment. This is the only public comment this evening. In a moment, I will ask you to raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. When we call upon you, please state your name, preferred pronouns, and where you live. Please raise your hand now if you would like to make a public comment. Seeing that we only have one person at this point who wants to make a public comment. Actually, we have two. I'm going to call there. We're going to limit you to three minutes. And let me just say that the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a public, on a matter raised during general public comment. Andy Anderson, please enter the room, state your name, and tell us where you live.
Hi, my name is Andy Anderson. I live in District 5, Precinct 8. I would like to comment on the impending legislation for trust voting in Amherst. The East Hampton City Council in May of 2019 passed an amendment to its charter. It was heard by the General Court in June of 2019. It was reported favorably by the committee out short, just a week later. It was enacted in September of 2019 by the General Court. The governor signed it at the end of September. Voters approved it in November 2019. This was six months from beginning to end. It goes into effect with the next election, which is this November as well. So two and a half years altogether. When you look at their legislation, it is all still simple. It had a very similar characterization of RCV, which is that would be filled in by proposed ordinance, but with the general requirement of rank choice, lower choices not impacting higher choices. So it's not that different than what we had here, but which was approved by the voters of Amherst as part of the new charter. This is back in March of 2018. But if the council does not change its requirement of the July 1st date for the legislature to act, we're looking at a first use in November of 2023, four and a half years later. This is not what the citizens of Amherst voted for. Back in November, question two to enact RCV statewide, they voted 77% in favor of that bill. They wanted to see RCV. A former state representative with decades of experience once told me that special legislation such as this is almost always passed without issues. So it's almost certain that the Amherst bill will be passed before November. But it doesn't need to be. The original charter language is sufficient. Even the Massachusetts Attorney General approved it before it went to the voters. So we don't really need this special legislation to proceed. From what I can tell, it was only the opinion of the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office that had been included in the charter. That's fine that we put it in the charter, but it's not necessary to proceed. I urge the council to amend its decision and direct the town management to expect and prepare for an RCV election this November and proceed with the high probability that the legislature, the General Court will in fact pass this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Anderson. Ira Brick, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Ira Brick. I live at 255 Strong Street. I just want to state that as you were considering whether to reject or accept the 900 signatures and hundreds of comments to for the moratorium and I think most people in the know in town expect that to be voted down by the town council, just consider that nobody but you is deciding on how to build the future of Amherst. That makes sense. That's attractive, that has retail, that's not overburdened with one kind of population that has diversity and so on. And in rejecting the pause that a moratorium would bring for more public comment and so on, there suddenly seems to be another onslaught of bylaw proposals. And there's enough scientists in Amherst that will tell you, if you're trying an experiment, which basically changing zoning is an experiment, you change one factor at a time. You don't just throw everything at it. And I have heard several people that are running for office this fall say in public, out loud on Zoom, we need to do something in light of the election coming. We need to be able to show some results, but those results are going to last for generations and many things will change. And I'm just urging you that even if you do reject the moratorium and reject that formal pause in building permits, please take your foot off the gas because it is chaotic right now. And even people that are trying to make sense and public trying to have good input and helpful input and wanting the right development. We are not anti-development. We want things to grow downtown, but not five-story dorms with no retail and no parking, five feet from cemeteries, et cetera. This is your opportunity to take your foot off the gas. So in 30 years, people don't say, what were they thinking in 2021? Thank you so much. I hope you hear that I am trying to support you. And if it sounds critical, I'm sorry, it's just very concerning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ira. Are there any other public comments at this point? Seeing none, we're going to move on with the consent agenda.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm so sorry. I just want to be clear because we tend to use the phrase at this time, we are not having any additional public comment sessions during any of our like later planning issues or anything like that, right? This was it for public comment tonight?
That is correct. And I did state at the beginning, this is the only public comment this evening. The consent agenda, please put that on the screen. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item, please let us know and we will remove that item. That does not require a second. The motion is as follows. To move the following items into printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules or Procedure 8.4 for the following item. This allows us to vote on it this evening. 8F Recommendation to Cultural District. And then 8F Recommendation to Cultural District. 9A1 Approval of Town Manager Appointments to Conservation Commission. That was placed here because coming from TSO, it was unanimous. And 9B2 Appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the following people. John Gilbert, Craig Meadows, Sharon Waldman, Peter Barick. And again, those were placed here because they were unanimous coming out of CRC. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Thank you. Is there any? Mandy Jo, yes.
I'm not asking to remove anything. I just want to be clear that there is another motion for appointments to the ZBA for two other people who are not on this consent agenda for the council. To just be clear, there was three motions at CRC and only two of them were unanimous.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move on. Let's start with Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber. Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
And so the vote is 12, 0, 0, and 1 absent. Okay. We are going to go on. There are no resolutions and proclamations. We're going to go on to presentation and discussion. And the first one is the participant, the first and only one, let me be more precise, is participatory budgeting commission. Within, this comes straight out of the charter where we were asked to create a participatory budgeting commission. We did so. That commission is reporting to us tonight. They were given an extension of their deadline due to COVID. I'm going to call on Meg Gage, John McCabe, and Kathy Shane. Please proceed.
Meg, you're muted and you could just tell me next slide when you're ready to move to the next slide.
Sorry about that. So I said, thank you Lynn and thank you Athena for being so on the ball with the first slide. And I'm concerned a little bit because John doesn't appear to be here yet, but his part comes a little later. We're very excited about this presentation. We're delighted to report to you on our work since we convened in October 2019. The commission, as Lynn just said, was mandated by the Charter, Section 1011 to, I'll skip through what she already said, to adopt a, to propose a measure adopting participatory budgeting or other similar method of resident participation in the budgeting process in Amherst. And we may want to come back to this language at the end of our presentation or some later time to determine if we've met this charge. Next, is that, is next enough to say, Athena? Next slide.
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Our presentation to you this evening briefly highlights the points of our detailed written report, which I hope you've had a chance to read. And our report this evening has two parts. First, our initial work between October 2019 and February 2020, during which time we learned what participatory budget is, how it works. We interviewed a variety of PB programs, learned about resources available to support PB, began the process of identifying a robust PB program in Amherst that might work. Then ta-da, March 2020, COVID hit and the commission took a seven-month hiatus from February until September 2020, after which we dramatically changed the nature and scale of our recommendations. Given the, briefly, given the economic realities facing the town as well as other critical priorities that had emerged, we realized that asking for funding to launch a PB program in Amherst at that time would be tone, at this time would be tone deaf and would surely not be approved. Our written report and this presentation focus on some short-term recommendations as well as some long-term recommendations. Next slide, please, Athena. So what is participatory budgeting? You can read this. It's a democratic process in which community members vote, decide how to spend a portion of the public budget. There are about 1,500 PB programs around the world, between 250 and 300 in the United States. Some are school-based programs or university-based or in particular districts and municipality. Some cities target low-income districts for PB programs. Many projects have specific categories for proposals that reflect established priorities and interests such as environmental protection, health and safety, the arts and youth. Next slide, please. These photos give you a sense of the range of projects that people have proposed. You can see there are examples of campaigning that goes on once the projects have been developed and vetted. And you can also see the enthusiasm of project promoters. These, this, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but a lot of municipalities have poster events or open up the school gym when people come and learn about the different programs. Next slide. Whoops, can you reduce it so those five things that aren't there yet? It's supposed to be, keep going back, it's supposed to start with the money. Oh, well. So how PB works? The most important, because originally Athena, this slide had these things flying in separately. Oh, well. The most.
Sorry, yeah, the graphics, the transitions don't work very well on Zoom.
Okay, bummer. So the idea was these would come up separately. The most important precondition for developing a PB program is having a specific source of funding for this purpose. You can't do it without money that's allocated. Next come, you don't see my cursor, right? Next come ideas. People brainstorm projects they would like to see become reality, projects that are aligned with program goals and criteria. Next comes in the middle, project development, which is the most critical step because it's where ideas are developed, including the creation of detailed and accurate budgets in alignment with town and goals and town capabilities. So for example, the cost. Is it realistic cost? And really, this committee, this group does work together to figure out what exactly the cost would be. Is it feasible? Does it have appeal or is it just kind of erudite or appeal only to a few people? Is it aligned with the town interests and goals? And really important also, there need to be no ongoing costs. So it has to be a one-time capital project or a one-time project affecting the operating budget, but without any ongoing burden to operating budgets. Then the exciting part happens, people vote. And we'll say a little more about the voting later. Wait, let me just go back to the project development here. Two most important points about project development. This stage here is really critical, the one in the middle. The most successful programs have a strong volunteer committee of individuals who help help project developers navigate the town systems to figure out what might work, how much it will really cost, and to be sure, there is no ongoing obligation to operating budgets. Project developers working with the committee learn a lot about how the town works, where decisions are made, and how much things cost. This project development step might be the most important educational step for the people who are involved in creating these programs. The voluntary, volunteer committee reduces the workload of town staff. Typically, a PB calendar is aligned with the annual budget process and takes place between June and November using funding allocated the previous year. Berkeley University's Participatory Budgeting Project, part of its Goldman School of Public Policy, has created an open-source project development software to help diverse community groups work together to design solid projects. Next comes the voting, as I said. Most PB programs allow all residents to vote as well as individuals as young as 12 or 14. As we describe in our written report, Stanford University's Crowdsource Democracy Team has created a free and open-source online tool for community voting that allows municipalities and organizations to run PB elections without engaging municipal election officials. And finally, ta-da, the projects are funded. Next slide. In summary, the core criteria for success are capital expense only or a one-time operating expense, staff and volunteer support, viable and aligned with town programs. Next project. So that's what PB is. What did we do? Well, first, we studied a range of different programs and difference of different sizes and in different parts of the country. We found that people working on PB are extremely eager to share their stories and to be helpful. While some of the most well-known programs are in wealthy cities like Cambridge and New York City, we found smaller ones too, like Kingston, New York, population just over 26,000, which is probably about what our population is. We don't actually know, with a PB budget of only $60,000. We also learned about numerous resources available to PB projects detailed in our written report in Appendix D. And perhaps most important, this is really important. We had extensive conversations about what constitutes meaningful participation. When is participation meaningful and when is it not? These were thoughtful and probing conversations and our conclusions are described in our written report in Section 2. Next slide, I'm going to hand it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Meg. As Meg said at the very beginning, we started this process pre-COVID and then COVID came along and basically changed everything. Over time, almost instantly, it was clear it was the wrong time to be asking for a segregated pot of money and new expenditures. So we turned and we'd actually been looking at these all the way through, right from the beginning, to say, can we improve participation in existing downtown programs where there is already an avenue for residents in the town to propose a project? And we looked at three programs, the Community Preservation Act, the Joint Capital Planning Committee, where we have innovated in Amherst and we accept resident proposals for capital, and the Community Development Block Grant. Next slide, Athena. When we looked at these, we were looking at how do they currently work? How if you wanted to propose an idea, would you even know which program to go to? And would you get any help? And we found there were hurdles, both that the rules vary a lot, program to program, on what, which project might be eligible. And it's not that easy to get concrete answers to, is my project potentially eligible? There's no central location to say, could I go down one pathway or another? Or deadlines, where do I find deadlines? There is some staff support, but not a lot of guidance on how to apply. There are forms, but not now what do you do? There's very limited support for figuring out what the cost of your idea is. Short, open periods. The windows have varied from year to year and they're often just a few weeks of, here's the time to propose and now the window is closed. And the timeframes have been varying year to year. Next slide. So one of our recommendations, and we feel this is completely actionable by the town with its own policies, are to do work, think of these three programs and promote greater transparency, more frequently ask questions and answers on how do I apply, what might be eligible, longer open times for proposals, coordinate application periods, so they're not open at different times of the year during different windows, but you could actually get through one portal. More information about criteria, staff support and encouragement for developing proposals. And one thing we didn't put on this slide, but we talked about a lot, is a single portal where you could go to one place on our website and propose a project and there would be, you fit better with the resident capital proposals, you fit better with community participation of the Community Preservation Act. So we would really think through guidance. And we think that with this kind of support, and we were really with the CPA group, we're noticing they're already talking about how to make it easier to apply and to know what might be eligible. They're eager to come out to district meetings to describe opportunities. So I think we have an opportunity in these three programs to increase participation and make it meaningful. Thank you.
Next slide. So we also have some long-term recommendations. Thank you, Kathy. We strongly recommend that we continue to explore PB options for Amherst. We had a terrific meeting with Sean Mignano. And when he was the Finance Director in the schools, he actually explored a PB program for the high school and was a strong advocate. Perhaps there might be a reparations PB project of some sort. Any area where expanding engagement and participation would be helpful as a possible area, is a possible area for creating a PB program. In our written report, Appendix C, we outlined several possible pilot programs. And we could also seek philanthropic support. And I'm going to hand it over to John, our colleague, John McCabe.
Thank you, Meg. Sorry I was late.
No, you weren't, you weren't late.
Technical glitch, but I got here in time. I'm going to read from a script just to make sure my comments are concise. Participatory budgeting as practiced in places like Cambridge and New York City, as has already been mentioned, rely on carve-outs from existing capital funds as a budget source. The commission understood immediately that given Amherst's current budget constraints because of COVID and our commitment to the much-needed capital projects in town, it occurred to some of us in the commission that we needed to think more creatively and maybe even entrepreneurially about identifying funding sources for PB. Participatory budgeting, and so this is my academic background, participatory budgeting is a natural fit, I believe, with our five college identity. In public policy and political science programs, there is significant interest in PB processes as an area of study, whether the focus be on democracy and participation or politics and budgeting. Perhaps, and here's, I just want to speak to the town council and our town manager and hopefully pique a little curiosity. Perhaps we could leverage this interest by inviting our college and university partners to support Amherst PB efforts, perhaps monetarily through seed funding, but probably more realistically, maybe through in-kind contributions of faculty release time and/or credit-bearing student internships to help staff the development and implementation of PB processes here in town. There may also be a significant opportunity to attract philanthropic support for PB. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Geraldine Aradaj Foundations, for example, have funded PB projects in towns across New Jersey in recent years. And there's a lot of money put on the table. Our five college partners could be instrumental in helping us seek grant support for PB initiatives. Grant writing is now an essential requirement for academics seeking tenure. We can leverage that and often and offer opportunities for town gown collaborations that benefit all concerned. Last and most important, an entrepreneurial approach to PB would seek to get away from zero-sum thinking about how we view our town budget. Instead of trading one project against another, we should be looking for ways to grow the size of our overall budget pie. PB might offer a chance for us to do that. Okay? I just want to say thanks to the commission and thanks to our chair, Meg Gage. It was really a pleasurable experience doing all this work. And I, that said, I just have to say one thing. I don't identify with the characterization of our town council or perhaps our town manager as autocrats. I simply don't accept that. Okay? I want to thank you guys for your hard work and I don't want to be associated with that language. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, John. Always forget to have a little political commentary.
Got to do it, right?
Yeah, and so you can read more about our ideas for leveraging outside interests and philanthropy in Appendix B of our report. And we actually, some of us had an app. And we actually, some of us had an appetite for trying to go out and find some money, but we didn't feel we had been authorized to do that, and we didn't know the process. And we didn't, we thought if we somehow went out and raised money for this, it would have seemed like we weren't supporting town priorities. So, but that's something some of us are quite open to. A next long-term recommendation, although it's not that long-term, the third bullet here. We strongly recommend that the CPOs make annual reports on advancements in meaningful participation in Amherst. We are extremely impressed by the three CPOs who are already doing so much to encourage participation. I, and I think many of us, see them as Amherst treasures. We think it would not be such a heavy lift because they're already so engaged and knowledgeable and would elevate their status if they gave an annual formal report to the Council and the town on the status of meaningful participation. And last, we encourage the Council and the town to revisit PB in the future. Future is kind of a vague word. Is that two years? Is that five years? We discussed it and decided to leave it "future." Next slide. Thank you so much for your time. Before I hand this back to you, Lynn, I want to thank and appreciate all the members of the Commission: Holly Bowser, John Fenske, Liz Larson, John McCabe, John Page, Kathy Shane, and myself. We are a group of individuals who come from very different places on the various Amherst political spectrums, or spectro, whatever the word is. We work with a high level of mutual respect, careful listening, sharing the work, backing up each other, generous about mistakes. And we made all decisions based on consensus. So I thank my Commissioners and I invite your questions. And I know we have our other, our other Commissions, I believe, are in the audience if they want to raise their hand. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. So let me just acknowledge that in addition to the three people who are on the Commission that were part of this presentation, Meg Gage, Kathy Shane, and John McCabe, we do have others in the audience. Holly Bowser is with us. Liz Larson is with us. John Page. And I was looking to see if John Fenske made it, but I haven't seen him yet. So are there any other comments from other members of the Commission at this time? Meg born me, you probably would be just fine staying right there.
But we're trying to keep, we know how busy and how much you have going on right now. So you may have noticed we're all talking. We're trying to make a big effort to be efficient and not to repeat what's in our long written report, which we put a lot of energy into, and I do hope everybody had a chance to read it.
We really want to thank you for this effort. So are there Counselor comments at this time? Mandy Jo.
Yeah, I just want to thank Meg for leading the effort. I know she led the effort on the Charter Commission, so thank you for continuing that on. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge the switch that the Participatory Budgeting Commission did when COVID hit to recognize the uncertainty and then give us some suggestions for how it could be incorporated into what we're already doing and all.
Thanks, Mandy Jo. Are there other comments or questions from the Council? Alyssa.
I was just going to say again, thank you. And thank you for not just repeating the report for us, but for having given us the report so far ahead of time. That was incredibly helpful. And then the other part I wanted to mention is, having been through one reason or another, part of all three of the existing processes that you refer to as being possible, things that could be coordinated differently, I have to say that at a glance, that feels like that's a way bigger lift to coordinate the three of those programs, which, as you said, have different requirements, some of which are not, are outside our control, like the state with CDBG versus a set aside of funds. So I'll be curious to, as I go through and look at more of the references that you provided, to at least think of something smallish we could do as a set aside to get started with that, because I actually think that might drum up more enthusiasm than trying to make CPAC more accessible to more people. Not that that wouldn't be a bad idea as well. I'm just, I see the enthusiasm in the videos and such that you send us, and those, like everybody said, were set asides.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Thank you. My comment is, I think that the Committee has done a very good service by working on clarifying the process for the existing programs that we have in terms of when things are available, when the dates are open and closed and reports. And I do think that will result in more participation from broader groups of people around town. So thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I'll just...
Meg, please, go ahead.
Some of us are happy to take the next steps if we can't do it on our own. So if there are next steps, either looking for funding or maybe trying to follow up what Sean was trying to do in the schools, we just need to get the go-ahead and know how to do it.
We appreciate that. I think that that's a conversation as people think more about this and perhaps look at it in relationship to the suggestions you've already made. But we're certainly open to furthering any money we can bring in and providing participation by other residents in money other than the ones that you already outlined. Are there any other comments at this time?
Just one other. John Fenske is watching on Amherst Media, participating. And I guess I really want to underscore how well we work together, even though, as you look at who we all are, we come from really, really different perspectives. We had an extremely amicable process, and every decision was made by consensus. Nobody disagreed with anything.
Different perspectives lead to probably some of the best decisions that we can make. Thank you. Alyssa.
In terms of next steps, I wonder if, I realize I'm putting the Town Manager on the spot, but does this, since when is that a problem? Is, would a potential next step, even though it's a little further away than we might like, be to address this through our budget policy guidelines? Would that, would that be maybe a place that we could have an effective conversation about next step?
Yes, Mr. Bachman.
So I think there are two, there's two areas. One is that, I mean, if the Council says this is of value to us, we want to put it in our budget policy guidelines. That would be a good place in terms of funding a standalone sort of participatory budgeting approach. But the other thing is the recommendation about, you know, how do we apply the concepts of participatory budgeting to our existing budgeting framework? And, you know, I don't know if a consolidated engagement platform is there, but it is stimulating to think about it, and we're always trying to improve that. So I think that is a real strong takeaway for us as well. And, you know, we'll start thinking through that as well. And since Holly has been part of this, she's, it's really important, you know, as we talk, prepare for the budget for next fiscal year, which starts in September. So, yes, so I think that's, those are the two next steps for us.
And just in general, we usually take a, first look at the financial indicators in November. We have a budget hearing in November, or a public forum, excuse me, where we invite residents to give us ideas about what they'd like to see in the budget. And then the goal is to have the Council adopt the budget guidelines before the end of December. So that's kind of the calendar of how that might fit in. Are there any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Our sincere thanks to the Committee. You've done a terrific job in not the best of circumstances, but you've delivered on what we asked for. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We are going to move on to zoning Article 15, Inclusionary Zoning. And this has been brought to the Council in the past. It was brought to the Council after a full discussion had taken place with CRC and the Planning Board. And when it was brought to the Council the last time, we referred it back for the actual function of public hearings. I want to draw your attention to two other items that are in the folder tonight. One is an item that Mandy Jo Hanneke put together. It basically is a flow chart or a schematic of how we move through various bylaws, particularly zoning bylaws. And the other is one that Chris Brestrop put together at my request. And I really want to just say thank you because it outlines all of the various zoning articles that are in process in some way. And it tracks the dates of when we've done what or when we might do what. Because the fact that zoning articles often go out for more of a discussion before they come to the Council, and then we then refer them back to the same bodies that have had that informal or semi-formal discussion for an actual, very formal, close-to-public hearing. And only then does it come back to the Council after, in the case of zoning, Planning Board, Community Resources Center, Communities Resources Committee, and finally, GOL after legal review have reviewed. So that brings us tonight to two articles that have, are now back on the Council. They require a first reading, which is tonight, a second reading presently planned for July 12. And then after that, a posting until it takes effect. I am more than glad to have Chris, Mandy Jo, or anyone else add to that description, but I wanted to make sure you knew those other items were in your packet as a way of helping understand why we keep going back and forth and back and forth. Okay? All right, with that, we're going to move to zoning article, bylaw Article 15, Inclusionary Zoning. And as I've mentioned, this has already been to us once, referred for public hearing. Those public, that joint public hearing did take place, and it is now back to us for the first reading. There will be no vote tonight. Okay? Chris, did you have anything else you would like to say about this article at this time?
I have a statement. I'm going to present the article, so... I wonder if Athena would have the very short PowerPoint that I sent today ready to be queued up, not right now, but when I call for it. It's only really three pages long, and it's just a kind of quick review. Anyway, good evening. I'm Christine Brestrop, Planning Director, and I'd like to present to you the proposed Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw Amendment. As I said, we have a short PowerPoint presentation, and then I'll walk you through the proposed language of the amendment. Town Council received a presentation on this topic from Senior Planner Nate Malloy on May 3 and voted to refer the amendment to the Planning Board and the CRC for public hearings. On May 19, the Planning Board and CRC held a joint public hearing, and both the Planning Board and CRC later voted to recommend to Town Council the adoption of this zoning amendment. Amherst has had an inclusionary zoning bylaw since 2005. However, it wasn't until 2013 that it produced any affordable units. Since that time, the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw was amended by Town Meeting in 2018 to lower the threshold of developments that would need to provide affordable units. However, at this time, the bylaw still only applies to developments that require a special permit for use or for certain dimensional modifications. We propose applying the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw to most residential developments. Since 2018, the bylaw has produced about 20 affordable units. The town has other mechanisms for gaining affordable units, including providing CPAC money for purchase of property and also for supporting comprehensive permits or for supporting the ZBA in its review of comprehensive permits. And recently, through comprehensive permits, we've had about 54 affordable units. 26 have been constructed and 28 are planned, but those have been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So now let's move to the quick review through our PowerPoint presentation. If Athena would put that up for me. Thank you. So turn to the next slide, please. The purpose of inclusionary zoning is maintaining and increasing the supply of affordable and accessible housing in the town of Amherst. And currently, what we're, the issues that we're being, that we're addressing are that our inclusionary zoning bylaw only applies to projects that produce 10 or more new dwelling units and that require a special permit for the use or to modify certain dimensional standards. These thresholds exempt many projects, such as most mixed-use buildings, from providing affordable units. Next slide, please. Some of the strategies that we've been working with are to eliminate the current thresholds for a special permit for use or modifying dimensional modifications to clearly state that the bylaw applies to most residential projects, including townhouses, apartments, and mixed-use buildings that result in 10 or more new dwelling units. And there are some exceptions. The exceptions include 40B projects because those are generally assumed to include affordable dwelling units. We're also excluding conventional residential subdivision and cluster subdivisions because including those at this time would be complicated and cumbersome, but it doesn't prevent the Town Council from going back in the future and including those. We're excluding fraternity zoning district because that mostly provides housing for students. And students are not an eligible class of people for, to inhabit affordable units. We're excluding the institutional uses such as college dormitories and also public housing because mostly those are affordable. We're going to be proposing to expand the local preference section of the bylaw. And we have new definitions for new dwelling units and residential developments. And we're requiring larger projects to provide a tiered type of affordability so that it could be affordable to different groups of people. And we're putting in an increase in the payment in lieu of providing affordable units on site. Is there another slide? I think there might be one more. Yep, so here are some of the things that we're retaining from the current bylaw. The inclusionary zoning would apply to projects that create 10 or more new dwelling units, and that is currently part of the, of the bylaw. The percentage of affordable units that would be required would be the same. We're not changing that. And we are changing the special permit that is already in place to be, that can be issued to modify the percentage requirements if six or more affordable units are required and half are constructed on-site. So we're allowing some of the affordable units to be provided off-site, and some of the affordable units could be provided via a payment in lieu. But we're increasing the amount of the payment in lieu from four times the current median family income, from three times the current median family income to four times. So now let's review the language of the proposed zoning bylaw. And if Athena would go to the memo that Paul Bachmann provided, there is language at the end of that memo. So it's the memo from Paul Bachmann to Town Council about inclusionary zoning. And if you would share the last two pages of that memo. It's in the Town Council.
We identified it earlier today.
There it is. So in terms of the language, we're recommending adding a definition of local preference, we're recommending adding a definition of local preference, clarifying it.
Lynn, I hate to interrupt, but Chris, this isn't the one that the attorney reviewed. Cause 1503 is not changed.
This is not the one that the attorney reviewed. So can you change, can you?
Did George include it in his GOL report?
Sorry, Lynn, Chris asked for the one from the memo. That's the one from the memo, so we find the other one.
Chris, I believe I might have.
Maureen has it, all right.
Hi, everyone. If this is.
Yeah, this is the one that the attorney reviewed. And I've added some words to this, to paragraph 1503 at his request. So we recommend adding the definition of local preference based on comments we received from the town attorney Joel Bard. The original language of the bylaw read that the permit granting authority or special permit granting authority could condition a permit on the applicant providing local preference to eligible persons who live or work in Amherst. And we were, we didn't want, that, that didn't seem to be broad enough. And based on Joel Bard's comments, we're adding a sentence to the end and starting with the word "those" in paragraph 15.03, that should all be bold italics. So "Those eligible for local preference shall include an applicant who lives in the community, is a municipal employee, works at a business in the community and/or has children in the schools of the community or other category of local preference as defined by the state agency providing financing in the initial lease-up." So this language pretty much reflects the language that was in the comprehensive permit for 132 North Hampton Road, the Valley CDC project that was reviewed by John Witten, the attorney at KP Law. Let's see, the next change that we have, we recommend applying inclusionary zoning to all residential developments. This is under regulations, including townhouses, apartments, mixed-use buildings, planned unit residential developments, and open space community developments. There would be some exclusions, as I've already mentioned, for affordable housing developments under Chapter 40B, conventional residential subdivision developments and cluster developments, any use permitted under Section 3.326 in the RF, residential fraternity district, again, it's occupied by students, institutional uses under Section 3.33, which are essentially dormitories, housing constructed by a public agency, and most of those, most of those housing developments are affordable, are all affordable. And then replacement of units after damage by fire or water or natural disaster. So we think that those are reasonable exclusions at this time. Let's see here. We're not proposing to change the numbers of affordable units that are required, but we do recommend a change in the introduction to Section 15.11. So instead of the current wording, we're recommending all residential development resulting in new dwelling units above the number already existing in the development shall provide affordable housing units at the following minimum rates. And then moving on down with the asterisk, while a provision of, we're just adding a clarification. So instead of just having a section reference, Section 3 point, excuse me, 4.33, we're putting in the words "cluster development." And instead of just having the reference to Section 4.55, we're putting in the reference to open space community development. So people will know what we're talking about. Moving on down, we recommend requiring for larger developments that require six or more affordable units, that 20% of those affordable units be set aside for those making less than, making 60% or less of area median income. We understand that the 80% or less is rather high threshold and many people who are of low income can't afford that. So we wanted to set aside some of the units for people who had 60% or less of area median income. Moving on down, we recommend a new definition of residential development. So we recommend that residential development means new dwelling units on one or more adjacent properties developed at the same time or in phases and that share aspects of the properties such as, but not limited to, shared utilities, a common driveway, shared parking, or the use of the combined properties for lot or building coverage calculations. And let's see what else. The bylaw already has a provision for modifying the requirement for affordable units by allowing the applicant to apply for a special permit to build off-site units or to pay a fee in lieu if he is required to provide four or more affordable units. We recommend raising the threshold to six affordable units to qualify for a special permit for off-site units or payment of fees in lieu. Because, this is because we'd like to encourage the provision of affordable units on site. We recommend raising the amount of the fee in lieu to four times the current median family income for Amherst instead of three times, which is what the current bylaw says. And just to give you a sense of what that means, Amherst median family income is currently $81,700. So four times that would be $326,800 that a developer would need to contribute to the town for each unit that he didn't want to or was not able to provide on site. This money would be held by the housing trust and would be used to create new affordable units elsewhere in town. With the permission of the Town Council President, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And also Rob Mora and Maureen Pollock are here and they can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Chris. And Maureen, thank you so much for coming forward with the correct bylaw at this point. I'm going to ask for three things first before we go to questions. Community Resources Committee, you held a hearing and wrote a report on this, Mandy Jo.
Well, the report speaks for itself, but for the audience, the CRC voted unanimously to recommend adoption.
The Planning Board, I don't see that Jack Jemcik has joined us yet unless someone else.
I think you were a little bit ahead of schedule, so I didn't warn him about that. I will tell him now.
George Ryan for GOL.
Yes, Lynn, we voted on June 23 for 0 in favor with 1 absent to declare this a clear, consistent, actionable. There is some confusion, at least in my mind. Chris's language and our language are slightly different. There's no difference in substance, but what I said to Athena on 623 was the lawyer's review with our change. And in our report, we explained the one change we made to the language, which was based on Chris's memo and using Chris's language. But we did make, we did word it slightly differently. It's highlighted and I thought that was going to be what the council would be looking at this evening. So maybe it's my failure to follow up with Athena, but maybe something we can sort out between now and the next reading. But my message to the council is that when we went through it, based on Chris's memo, based on the attorney review, which raised the issue of clarity in terms of that reference to local preference, we adopted her language, but we did tweak it slightly. So she perhaps needs to look at it to make sure that she's comfortable with it. We were very comfortable with it. But that's the, the only change we made and that should be in your packet. It's certainly what is described in our report.
And we will make sure, working with you and also Chris, Athena and I will make sure that we have the language we are adopting when we meet on the 12. Thank you, George. Jack Jemcik has joined us. And Jack, would you please give us a very brief comment about the Planning Board with regard to inclusionary zoning, Article 15?
Oops, let me get my, I don't have my sunflowers. But I have to pull up the folders here. I thought we were going at eight, so I apologize.
We got to this item earlier.
Yeah.
No problem.
Bear with me here.
Excuse me, Athena has the Planning Board report to Town Council, so she might be able to pull it up really quickly.
Jack, do you have, just want to share with us what the vote was.
Yeah, so, so we voted 6-0 to approve the inclusionary zoning. And again, we, we had everybody in attendance. Janet was not feeling well, so that's why it's not seven. Something, but yeah, I'm just checking on the report that we gave you guys.
I believe it's on the screen at this time.
Oh, okay.
That's, I think, unless you have any other comments, that's really what we need to know at this time.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't, there wasn't much, you know, again, you know, kind of unanimous sort of, you know, the decision on this one, we, we know it was a long time coming. And everybody was on board with, with, with some element of, you know, affordable housing being included within the, you know, specific districts that were outlined within this particular article, so.
Thank you. So I'm going to move now to council questions. Dorothy, you have your hand up.
Well, I do think this is a really fine and detailed report and that it covers the items that were discussed actually at length in many different venues. I have one question, which is, when you say it is for new housing, and I'm, I'm not sure how redevelopment fits in here, whether that's, you know, if, if there is housing on a, on a plot of land and if the decision is made to redevelop it, would that be considered new and then subject to inclusionary zoning? Or would it be exempted? This is for Chris.
So, and Rob will confirm what I'm saying, I think, which is that if there's already housing on a property, then you would take the number of units that's on the property and you would subtract that from the number of new units. So if you had 10 units on a property and you were building 50 units, you would say that 40 of them would be counted towards the affordable component. And I think that's correct, but Rob, I hope will not his head that I am correct.
Rob, did you have any further comment?
So yes, I agree with that, but I'll also add that if those 10 units, those existing 10 units were removed, demolished from the site, any new units of 10 or more would trigger this bylaw.
Thank you.
Dorothy, any further questions at this time? Andy.
So just one question for anybody who feels like can answer it. There's been a little bit of discussion about Section 15.03 on the local preference. And language was read to us about local preference that was suggested in the revised version that included as part of the definition having a child in our schools. And of course, having a child in the schools could be because they're resident of the town of Amherst, has a child in the school, but they are in a economic position where this might be helpful. But it also could include people who are sending their kids to our schools through the school choice program and are not residents of Amherst. So my question is, was there any discussion about school choice and whether that was an intended group of people that we would want to add to the definition of a local preference?
Chris? I think the town is actually discouraged by DHCD and Valley CDC and others who are in the affordable housing business from imposing local preference. So it's something that is not really generally smiled upon by those who promote affordable housing. They feel that affordable housing is, or the lack thereof, is a regional issue and that we should be thinking regionally when we're talking about affordable housing. But at the same time, we also had a discussion about families who have children in the school, whether they're here, you know, what, however they're here, wouldn't it be great if they were able to live in this community? And if they are eligible for affordable housing and they have families in the school, we felt that it was really, you know, incumbent upon us to include them in, in this list. And this list has been approved by DHCD for other projects. And so we felt that it was, it was a really inclusive list. Now, this only applies to the first round of rental. It doesn't apply after that. So after they do the first lottery, this local preference no longer applies. And I think that's because the financing agencies in the state feel that it really isn't a regional issue that we have rather than just a, a local issue. So I think that's what I have to say about that issue.
Andy, did you have further question or comment?
No, I do not.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. I just wanted to ask a little bit about, or if you could talk a bit about outreach in terms of the attempts to reach potential eligible people, particularly outreach to our local employers like Amherst College, you know, UMass, the town of Amherst itself. We've seen that there'd be a sizable number of people who, who might qualify in various working areas. And I'm wondering, do we have any oversight over this? Is it sort of contracted out? Is it just, could you just talk a little bit about the outreach process in terms of reaching people who might be, who might qualify, who actually live and work here, especially work here?
Yes, so what happens is that an entity is hired to manage the marketing and lottery process. And they do a very good job of reaching out to the community. I don't know specifically if they contact Amherst College or UMass. I'm sorry that Nate Malloy isn't here because he would know that. But they do a very good job of posting availability of housing and putting ads in the paper and, you know, really trying to make it as widely known as possible that these units are available. And currently, we, we don't have as many agencies that do this kind of work as the eastern part of the state has. But recently, we've become aware that there is an entity that both Barry Roberts and also Aspen Heights have been using that is very, I would say, maybe aggressive, assertive, whatever the correct word would be, in reaching out to community and they have a lot of experience in doing this. So I think, I think that they're doing a really good job of trying to capture as many people who would be eligible as possible.
George?
Yeah, just, the cost of that is carried by the developer, correct? This kind of outreach, et cetera, these entities, as you put it, that are hired, that cost is carried by the developer? And secondly, do we audit this after it's done? Do we ever go back and look and see if there really are that good?
Chris? We know for a fact that some entities are not that good because we've had experience in dealing with them. The current entity that's working with the people that I mentioned is, is considered to be very proficient and professional. What was the second part of your question?
This is paid for by the developer.
Oh, yes, it's paid for by the developer and it costs anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 a unit to do this for the first time. So it's not, it's not a drop in the bucket. And then they also have the ongoing, you know, loss of rental rate between the difference between a market rate unit and the affordable unit. So it, it costs them money to do this.
I'm going to go to Alyssa and Dorothy, come back to after I've taken other people who haven't spoken and asked questions. Alyssa?
I actually am not convinced that we answered Andy's question, at least not in my mind, about school choice families. And so I guess that's just something that'll be addressed by the agency that actually does the advertising, et cetera, and manages that first thing. But it's not clear and I'm not sure we can actually make it clearer to and actually have that work. And I don't think DHCD thought that through at all. Just as I'm going to complain about DHCD now and say, they can say all they want about how affordable housing is a regional need, but when all our neighboring communities in the region have already hit 10%, then they can talk to us about that. And in the meantime, it's entirely appropriate for our community to consider having some level of local preference, which, as we indicated, is only for the first round, only that first round.
Thank you. Kathy?
I have a question on both the first round and then over time, Chris. If, if the development opens up and it has whatever the number of units are that are affordable and 10 years from now it's sold to a new owner and management firm, is this in perpetuity that they, that they have it? And, you know, so we would track those. And, you know, so we would track those over time. I think I saw you nodding your head that yes, someone says set up.
It is in perpetuity and it's recorded. There's a deed restriction that's recorded at the registry of deeds that. That shows that this is an ongoing, something that needs to be taken care of. And the special permit that the entity receives is also recorded at the registry of deeds. So I wouldn't say that the town necessarily. Monitors this on a ongoing basis, but I think perhaps Rob could talk about that a little bit more.
Yes, so the developer is required to report to DHCD. So I think someone earlier asked about the auditing process. So I think that would be what we would consider the closest thing to the audit. And then we are informed of any questions, concerns, issues from directly from DHCD. And Nate Malloy is our contact with with DHCD on issues like that. If something isn't following the 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 marketing plan that the town is a part of too.
Okay, so I I wanted to just on the agency and outreach. John Horneck, at one point, and I can't remember within the last 12 months or the last two years. But he talked about trying to streamline the process. So like a Barry Roberts first time in doing these units. That lowering the paperwork, the complexity by making things simpler, consolidated sites. Is that something the we rely on an agent to do? Is there something the Affordable Housing Trust could do? Is there a way of, you know, you said that the threshold cost was at the beginning. But is there like teach one, teach the next? So I'm just looking is is there a way to way to make this easier over time? Rather than having everyone have to learn all the bells and whistles and how to do this?
Chris, I'm gonna go to you again.
So we've talked about trying to establish some sort of a regional agency that could include, you know, and Amherst and South Hadley and Granby and Sunderland. And some of the communities that surround us and coming together to establish some sort of an administrative. And entity, that's the only word that I can think of, that would help people. That would be a go to place where people could go to learn how to do this. Currently, there is not that. Nate Malloy does, you know, make recommendations to applicants when they're coming through about how they should or shouldn't do things. But we really don't get too involved in that part of the process. It's really up to the applicant to make an arrangement with, you know, Amherst Housing Authority or. This new group is called S E B or there are other groups that do this type of thing. But there's not, I would say it's it's a little bit of a rocky road for developers to do this at this time.
And I'm just thinking both for the developers and then for the applicants also just, you know. Where do you get the form? How do you apply? It it just, it feels in the healthcare world, people were talking about, you know. Each thing had its rules and regulations and if we could just streamline them to make it less. Make it easy at both ends, but the computer does more of it. So I I just don't know whether there's an opportunity. I'm not saying, I think this bylaw is fantastic, so I'm totally for it. And I'm just looking down the road to make it easier and easier as people learn to work with it. So that, yeah, so the resistance to it, people just said, this is the way we do business in Amherst.
Mandy Jo.
Yes, to answer a couple of questions, as to the agency issue that Kathy was just speaking about. We've been told by Nate Malloy when that was asked at CRC that the town cannot actually get involved in the marketing. Because it's not town owned, so that's why the regional agency issue comes in in terms of making things easier for both the developer and the. Applicants. To go to local preference in CRC, that was discussed. And given the language that was there, CRC, and I believe the planning board believe felt that generalizing the language to. Um, we originally didn't have the four lists in there, that came from a recommendation from the town attorney. But generalizing it to match up with the DHCD recommendations so that. The permit granting authority could make their own because it ultimately goes to the permit granting authority to make those. Requirements under the approvals, the special permit or the site plan review, that they should have all of the options. And and so that's why it's so general. And then that's why when, I think, I assume that's why when. The town attorney came back and said, what does this mean? Chris went to DHCD's definition and included them all because we felt it should be as as we explored with. Some of the other ones, when we were making recommendations to the ZBA on what local preferences should be given. It's ultimately the permit granting authority's decision, not ours, not a bylaws. And and so we felt it should be as general as possible. And then the town attorney wanted it to be more defined.
Mandy Jo, thanks for both those clarifications. I I just wonder, since we're on this issue. I understand that, you know. The requirements for preference can be applied to the first round. But suppose it's 20 years later and there's really that kind of preference is needed. There's no way to reenact preference. Thank you. Okay, Darcy.
I think Dorothy was first.
She is, but she's gone once, so I'm trying to get all of it of not coming in.
I just wanted to commend the planning board for coming forward with this bylaw. I'm also really supportive of it and I know they've, you know, Christine's had it on her list since 2018. So I'm really thrilled to have it come through the council. And I just wondered if. On the issue of outreach to find. Eligible people for the affordable units. And I understand that the town isn't responsible for that. But is there an avenue to outreach to town employees? Because I I'm thinking, I mean, this is what we've heard forever is that town employees. Can afford to live in Amherst. Is there an avenue that you've seen that is an easy way to outreach to our own employees?
Chris.
We often see email and we also see posters around town around town hall. So that, you know, notice notices town employees about affordable units. So, and, you know, of course, we read the paper. So it, you know, it is, it is made known to us that units are available because we see posters around town hall.
Thank you. Dorothy.
Um, I again commend this bylaw in this very complete form. And the question of students who are here through school choice. We have talked again and again about our need to bring in families with children. We have a large drop in our number of children in our public schools. And the strength of a town really depends upon renewing itself. So, but following up on Darcy's question, perhaps outreach to the schools. So that students that that families who are presently living in Amherst, perhaps in not ideal situations, may be doubling up. That they be informed through the schools that these units would be available, could be a way of of meeting our needs. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I I want to thank the planning board, the community resources committee, the planning department. And GOL for all the work that you've done to bring this forward. It's an exceptional opportunity for Amherst. I do want to ask that we quickly confer. Tomorrow morning to make sure that we have the right bylaw. And that GOL has acted on the right bylaw. So because they are meeting Wednesday and they will not be meeting again, I do not believe before July 12. So I want to make sure that we've cleared all that up. Is there any other question or comment at this time? Okay, this is a first reading, it will be back on our agenda on July 12. Oh, Mandy Jo, I'm sorry.
I just want to confirm that it's already posted on the bulletin board for the two week notice before we vote.
Athena.
Yes, it's posted.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we're going to take a quick break. We will be back at eight oh five. And we will then take up article sixteen temporary moratorium. Please mute and take your video down and when you come back, bring your video back. We are going to proceed. The next item on the agenda is zoning by law article sixteen temporary moratorium. Also note, as I did with the first one, this is our first reading. Athena, has the this been posted today or July 12?
Yes.
Thank you. There are three petitioners from the council. And I wondered if any of you would like to make a comment at this time. There are Darcy, Dorothy and Kathy. Kathy.
Yeah, Lynn, I'll lead off, as you said, we we were originally. Supporters of this and actually helped write the bylaw. And I just, you've already heard us do a brief presentation and we did do one at the planning board and CRC joint meeting. And I think I just want to emphasize a few things. On why we're bringing this now, I, as we come out of COVID. I think there's an opportunity and an urgency actually to think about where we want Amherst to be in the future. And particularly thinking about our downtown. When we proposed this moratorium, we had, we didn't have a really good sense of the widespread support of it. But but the idea is that taking. A temporary pause, six months to put some design standards on the books for downtown. On how wide the sidewalks are, where the buildings are relationship would give. Reality to a master plan saying design matters. We want a walkable, livable downtown that's lively with businesses. And we've seen some movement toward this affordability standards. We just talked about one tonight, that a lot can be done in six months. That will be our legacy as a council to really be thinking strongly about our own future. And I was at a the Joint Capital Planning Commission. Committee meeting when Chris Bestrop was talking about why she wanted some design money to work with the designer and thinking about things. And she she really said a lot of words that I would like to say. That it's time to examine what we like about our downtown and what steps we need to make it better and more suitable to our future. And that's what this moratorium is seeking to do. The specifics in it are laid in the bylaw, but really starting to think about how wide are sidewalks? Sidewalks are really not mentioned. How far does the building need to be from the street? Are there any public spaces where people can gather? What kind of climate standards, sustainability standards are in the construction? Affordability, I think we'll be able to get that on the books. And the idea is that new buildings and new developments would meet these. It just applies to downtown. It's just for large residential buildings, so it wouldn't stop any new business from opening up. But I think what we're talking about is a town that builds on our historic assets. We have really quite a unique town and thinking of what we have so that we build on that and we have some time. So it is buying time, that is the intention of the moratorium. It's not anti-development. Many of the people who are signing on for this would like to see growth and change. They just think how we develop matters. And I'll stop with that.
Thank you. I want to just take a pause and note that Shalini Valmeln has joined us. Shalini, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Brief comments at this point, Dorothy.
I think if you take a look, if you've read the letters that have come to us. You can count them, but I ask you to read them. First of all, the letters supporting the moratorium weigh exceed those opposed to it. But it's the quality of the letters, it's what they say that matters. Many, many people tell us how many years they've lived in Amherst. That's taken as a statement of their knowledge of and commitment to this town. Their sense that this place matters to them, it's part of their life, it's part of their history. They don't want to say goodbye to it. There are people who seem to think that the downtown is a place that they have gone, that they like to go, that they want to go in the future. They don't want to seed it. They talk about the community, they talk about people, they talk about sense of place. And in some of the earlier letters, they talked about the businesses that they used to go to. Now, we know that there's problems with retail, but that doesn't mean we can't have it in downtown Amherst. So I I would hope that you could give us the time, give the planning department, the planning board the time. To continue the work that they've been doing, they have been working very, very hard. Okay, meetings and all kinds of plans and listening and reading. They've been working very hard, rushing, trying to get this done. And we're not there, we are not there yet, we're close, we're close. But we need to make sure that we know what we're doing so that what is built. Fits the town of Amherst, fits the needs of Amherst and the needs of the Amherst of the future. Not just some transient moment. So obviously taxes matter, but you know, you can get a lot of taxes from a building. That is attractive and that meets the needs of the community. It it's not that, you know, it has to be ugly in order to get taxes. We all want to increase our tax revenue, we all want to continue our plan with the four major projects. But I don't think we have to give up our downtown in order to do it. And people have been writing such heartfelt letters that I hope that you've been reading them. Because each one is unique and reflects that person's deep commitment and love of Amherst. And their fear and worry that they're about to lose an important part of it. So please, I do urge you to support the moratorium.
Thank you. Darcy.
Thanks. The purpose of the temporary moratorium bylaw is to put a pause on downtown development pending. Working out all the various zoning bylaws that are needed to be put in place before we forge ahead. With more building downtown that doesn't represent a community wide vision. The moratorium has now more than a thousand resident supporters, including over 900 registered voters. Over the last day, we all saw a huge number of emails that came in from supporters of the moratorium. The opposers of the moratorium seem to be. The bid, the chamber and a small number of developers, landowners and residents. We have not addressed several of the issues raised by the moratorium. One of the reasons given on the petition was to provide time for town staff and a consultant to provide outreach to residents. And to assist in drafting design standards. Hiring a consultant I hear is underway now. Clearly, we don't want to permit buildings before allowing the consultant to weigh in, hearing for residents. And agreeing on design standards. Some of those designs standards, I assume, will include amendments to the dimensional table requirements. For for setbacks and building heights and so on. Finally, we just received the Climate Action Adaptation and Resilience Plan, which addresses new building construction. Do we want to put protect protections in place to help us ease into requiring a zero energy stretch code? When the state has finalized that code for municipalities to opt into? That's a decision that we need to make. The temporary moratorium is just that, temporary. It's not intended to stop development, just to make it part of a thoughtful vision for the town. Which I'm actually confident we could agree on. Permitting buildings right now on a one off basis could have a really detrimental effect on that long term vision. I hope my colleagues will join in voting for the moratorium bylaw at the next meeting.
Thank you, Dorothy and Darcy and Kathy. I'm going to now go to the three committees that have looked at this. And ask for their reports, are there just the brief comments? Not the full report, obviously. Mandy Jo.
Yep, the the report's in the written report, but the CRC voted four to one to. Recommend that the council not adopt the proposed more bylaw.
Thank you. Jack Jemstick for the planning board.
Yes. The planning board voted six zero, one was absent. Against the moratorium and. I mean, I guess I don't need to go into more detail, but this. I mean, I guess I don't need to go into more detail at this point.
Your report is in our packet.
Yes, and it's very detailed, nine pages, so.
Thank you. GOL?
Thank you, Lynn. GOL voted on June 16th four to zero with one abstention to declare this proposed by law to be actionable, but not clear and not consistent. And we outlined our argument for that based on the attorney review in our report.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments at this time? Mandy Jo?
Thank you. So I'm not going to vote for it. And, but I have a couple of things to say. First, length of residence in this town is not the only way to represent a commitment to the town. Someone who's lived here for one year can be just as committed to this town as someone who's lived here thirty-five years. Second, we heard today from a chair of a committee about participating in town government who discounted half of our population and said our population is somewhere around twenty thousand, when it's actually forty thousand. And many of the letters we received supporting the moratorium stated flat out that students don't belong in downtown. We got a problem when many of our residents refuse to accept that we have a forty thousand population that includes about twenty thousand residents and that they have full opportunity to participate and live in this town wherever they want. And a moratorium does not support that. Third, this moratorium deals only with building permits. All the projects that are currently being reviewed and any project that comes up for review in the next six, nine months in front of the planning board or the ZPA can receive their special permit or site plan review approval, even if we adopt the moratorium. So not issuing a building permit won't stop these projects from being approved under the current zoning. So it won't actually do what the people who wrote all those letters supporting the moratorium want it to do, because it won't allow us to get design standards in place before buildings are approved with either a special permit or a site plan review. So it doesn't accomplish its goal, and many of the letters supporting the moratorium were misinformed about that. Counselor Shane talked a lot about, we need to fix the sidewalk issue. Well, that's a public way. We can do that without stopping the issuance of building permits. And maybe we need to do that, but that shouldn't be, it's not something that developers, we need to be putting on developers. That's what we control as keepers of the public way. If we want ten-foot sidewalks by that corner at One East Pleasant Street, we can get rid of the left turn lane, move the through lane over to where the left turn lane, and add ten feet of sidewalk and greenery. We have the right to do that as the public way keepers. So let's do that if you really think that sidewalk is too tiny and you can still have a zero setback while doing that. So with all of that said, I can't support this because, number one, it won't do what it's supposed to do. And number two, one of the bigger reasons, it has priorities we haven't adopted as a council, so there's no guarantee that we could ever end the moratorium because we might not even pass what the moratorium proposes we would need to pass because we might not be able to get two-thirds vote on any of that. And so I just can't support it.
Thank you. Jack, did you further comment from the planning board?
I did. I want to, you know, Mandy actually addressed that it was the sidewalk thing. And I, you know, we have seen projects where, you know, our visualization of the project, again, this One East Pleasant Street happened before my time. And I think you know, the, the former planning board would admit to this, that we didn't realize that was going to, you know, make the Scott, the sidewalk skinny right there. But I, I want to reiterate, you know, Mandy's suggestion there that this is an easy fix. I mean, and, and with regard to One East Pleasant Street, you know, that's the sidewalk issue. And yes, it's a little skinny, but I, I hope that the town can remedy that by some sort of, you know, reconfiguring of the right of way there. So that's all, I just wanted to speak to that specifically, but you know, and then again, I think, you know, when we're looking, I guess, sustainability, you know, we want sustainability is all about, you know, densifying in areas that are appropriate for that, and certainly the downtown is all that. So that's, you know, I just, I just want to, you know, make that point, that, that I think the planning board understands that downtown allows for densification because of the utilities and everything being present there. So and I guess the last point is, you know, the building moratorium, it, it just seems, it does, it's not, it's not a good look for Amherst to, to pass this. I mean, I mean, I, I don't know how anybody, you know, a developer would look at Amherst and, and say they have a building moratorium. And it's like, you know, we are doing so much work. I mean, credit to Chris Bestrop and the planning department, everybody there, they have been working overtime. And the planning board has been week, you know, meeting weekly to keep up with the planning department. And I think we're just, we're just, we're ahead of the curve here in terms of what this, you know, building moratorium is trying to achieve. So those are my, that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I, I read as many and virtually all of the letters that we received. You know, I'm very sympathetic with people who've been asking, who are asking for the moratorium. There were, and I think there's been good discussion about it. I think there was also, I am very concerned about the point that Jack just raised, which I heard in other comments, which is that this will be perceived as being anti-development, that we have been struggling in Amherst for a long time to try and make this a business-friendly community and seen as a business-friendly community. So I think we have these two competing, but in passionate points. But the thing that I'm wondering about, and I'll invite others who have more expertise to answer this question, come back and see if they can respond to it. But there's a list of proposals and that need to be addressed. There's ninety-day period, or there's a hundred and eighty-eight period that can be extended by ninety days, I believe, if I've got it right. If they're not all met. And what is the likelihood that all of them could be addressed in the time period of even the longer moratorium extended by the additional period? And if it, because if it can't happen, then it's just a delaying tactic, but it's not really a moratorium that achieves the results that are being asked. And the last thing that I, I just want to say, since I have a minute left and I won't take it. I am concerned about the GOL report because there are charges to make sure that it's clear, consistent, and actionable. Two of those three criteria are admittedly not met. And I don't know how we can have a functioning bylaw that is not clear and consistent, because how do you interpret something that doesn't meet the standards that town council advises that we need to have? Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. George?
Thank you, Lynn. This whole process seems to be aimed at a couple of developments that have taken place in downtown over the last ten years. Developments that in fact have increased housing choice in Amherst. Developments that have actually lessened the pressing demand for more housing that has in turn helped increase housing options and potentially lower costs for everyone else in the rental market. Developments that have lessened the attractiveness of rental conversions, which to my mind are the real threat, at least in my district, to the residential neighborhoods by easing the market pressures. Developments that have brought badly needed revenues to a town which has the seventh highest property tax in the Commonwealth, where residential property taxpayers are responsible for ninety percent of the property tax revenue. And that source provides seventy percent of our overall revenues. Given what I think is the likely passage of the IZ bylaw, which I support, future development in this downtown that this proposed moratorium would put a halt to, at least for the time being, would actually increase substantially the number of affordable housing units in the town. These developments have brought vitality, youth, and spending power to our downtown, which in turn are exactly the kind of things that will encourage the businesses that they keep talking about, that they want to attract. These developments align perfectly with the goal of our master plan to increase density in the downtown and village centers. And finally, they are state-of-the-art environmentally and help the town reach its climate action goals. The sponsors speak of their vision for Amherst. I just gave you my vision for Amherst. These developments help realize that vision, and I hope that my colleagues will vote against this. I will.
Steve Schreiber?
So I first heard of the idea of a moratorium candidate, Dumont. I guess it was three years ago, and we're all running, we're trying to run for council. And my response then was that moratoriums are interesting, but this one was exactly backwards, that we should be restricting development everywhere but the, the downtown area. So if we want to create a sustainable Amherst, then really we need to focus on downtown and not on the, basically, the path, the path of least resistance, if we stop construction or stop design in the central business districts, becomes all of the areas around that. And so that's already a problem or an issue that one can see, and I think it's been described by, by some of the letter writers, that there is a demand for housing, that housing will go somewhere. Do we want formerly entry-level owned, occupied houses to be converted to, to be bought by LLCs and converted to apartments? Or would we rather have apartments be in the downtown area? So, so the, the moratorium is backwards. The best possible place to build in Amherst is that part which is already has the infrastructure of all kinds downtown. And so I'm not going to propose a moratorium, the reverse moratorium, but I hope my councils will join me in voting against this.
Melanie?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the earlier part, so I might be repeating some things. But I first want to just acknowledge what I'm hearing in our community is a concern for losing our sense of community. Like, we have these big buildings and it doesn't make our downtown look attractive, walkable. I'm hearing about affordable, need for affordable housing and parking concerns. And I'm hoping I can share some of my thinking around each of these and what I've learned in studying and researching moratorium. So speaking to just a sense of community, I just want to bring our attention to the last events, last two events we've had in our comments, the Juneteenth, which was really a coming together of the community. It was a lot of work by the staff. It was led by the BIPOC community. There were restaurants there. There were artists, storytellers. And that's, community is because of people, not the buildings, right? And so what can we be doing as a community to work together to really be supporting each other, supporting the BIPOC artists, farmers markets, and building that community actively, which is already happening? There's the arts festival that happened. We're going to have music festival, and that's what's going to bring people downtown and revitalize our downtown. The second thing in terms of affordability, I reached out to April Anderson, who I'd heard at the MMA conference. And she shared with me that the state strongly discourages moratoriums to the point that the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development expressly asks if the host community has enacted a housing moratorium in their new one-stop application, which is the source of MassWorks Infrastructure Grants and other planning and development assistance. So if you are looking to get grants from the state, or even, even if you're not actively looking right now, the impression it creates in the state is that, oh, Amherst is one of those towns, and let's focus on towns that are more progressive. So I would think that if we are looking to address some of the other concerns of affordable housing or parking or design and walkability, let's put our minds to it. And what I'm seeing the staff come up is with the solutions, whether it's offering public spaces, inclusionary zoning, we didn't need a moratorium. All you needed to do is send an email. Can you make it a priority? And it was made a priority. So we don't need a moratorium for that. So let's all put our heads together and all the time that we're spending here, let's figure out what is the kind of town we want to create, and let's just get going doing that.
Are there any other comments at this time? Alyssa?
Sorry, frantically pounding on video and mute buttons. I guess the only thing I wanted to add that I, that I think is a little different is that I don't understand how it is that the, of the many, many people who have written to us, a significant number of them have not ever been in town meeting, watched a planning board meeting, gone to a hearing of the ZBA of the planning board, participated in forums, participated in the master plan. And yet suddenly we're being asked for this, what, what feels very much mythical to me, planning process that will hire a consultant and we will somehow come up with some amazing downtown mini-master plan. And I, I'm having a really hard time with that. Whereas I think that what I'm seeing, what I've been encouraging people who've expressed these concerns since way back during the campaign where some candidates were talking about a moratorium, and now we suddenly, at the end of our term, are facing a moratorium when we didn't have any question about one for two years before that, is that the answer is participation. The answer is if you're interested in these topics, please pay attention to the zoning bylaws, that because we have like all these things in the mix. We have the chart now conveniently for people's reference, where we are with things. And that's where people should be putting in their effort is to say, I don't quite like the way this particular zoning bylaw looks. Is this going to have the intended consequence? And that's the place to engage. That's where we actually did fall behind as a legislative body in terms of not doing zoning for a while. And obviously pandemic, obviously temporary zoning. In an ideal world, one would be doing these things on a continuous basis, just like town meeting needs to do. So I really, really strongly encourage the people who, I feel like in some cases are embracing a myth of what a moratorium would be, to actually engage in the things that are in front of us, like when they wrote to us about inclusionary zoning, like when they wrote to us about other issues, and continue to do that so that we can make those bylaws better as they're wending their way through the process, because all those things are in process. And if we layer on the moratorium on top, we already have those priorities in hand, and we are continuing to work on those. So I really do want people to be engaged, but I want them to be engaged in how to improve what we have, not in some theoretical consultant comes out, talks to a few people in a room, and that's suddenly the recommendation that we have, because that's not how we did our master plan, and that's not how we do zoning in this town.
Are there any other counselor comments? Evan?
Yeah, so I vote with the majority of CRC to recommend we not adopt this. And I will be voting against it when it comes up for a vote on July 12th. And I do want to make some of my reasons clear, although I did certainly quite a bit in CRC. One of them is I, is, look, play it simple. It's an anti-housing policy. And we are in the midst of a housing crisis. The data is there that shows that our town, our state, and our country are in the midst of a housing crisis. And the solution to that is to produce more housing units. Putting a moratorium, a temporary moratorium on the production of new housing units in the midst of a housing crisis makes much sense to me. Putting a moratorium on wind turbines in the midst of the climate crisis. It's taking the solution and it's stopping this It's taking the solution and it's stopping the solution to the crisis. I also don't think that this moratorium aligns with the progressive values that we claim as a community. You can't say that you believe that housing is a right and then work to stop the production of new housing units. If you look at progressive cities across the state, across the state, across the country. They're working to lower barriers to the production of multifamily housing. And here we are having a conversation about erecting a barrier to the production of multifamily housing. We are out of sync with what progressive communities are doing. This is another case where Amherst actions are not aligning with the progressive values we claim and our progressive rhetoric. And it is certainly not lost on me that when you go through the petition that was submitted in uh March, I think it was, that it is dominated by homeowners, homeowners who are petitioning to put a moratorium on the production of new rental units. That's a problem to me. That is not what a progressive community does. I also want to echo what Shalani said, that this uh reduces our competitive competitiveness for state grants. The Baker administration has made clear that housing production is a priority. We are a housing choice community. This works against that. Look at the sidewalk on East Pleasant Street. Look at the multi-use path on East Hadley Road. We got those with housing choice grants. This reduces our competitiveness for those future grants. This makes it harder for us to fund future infrastructure. It also really does it to service to the hard work that our staff has done to uh to get rid of the impression that Amherst is unfriendly to business or not open to investment. I know our staff has worked really, really hard to get rid of that perception of Amherst and this completely undoes that. And it does that without accomplishing the actual goals. I echo what Andy said. I echo what Mandy said. I don't think this actually accomplished and what Alyssa said. I don't think this actually accomplishes what the sponsors uh hope it will accomplish. And so I think we benefit, we get the damn. I think there are other ways to do this. We've heard the concerns of the community. I think that we're smart enough to have good policy uh responses to it uh without reaping the damages that this will have on our community. So I will be voting against it and I hope my colleagues join me.
Jack, did you have further comments with regard to the planning board's position?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to say that I think when we looked at this, the the timeframes just really didn't. Uh it was gonna it I I don't feel like we felt like it was going to affect. Um you know, the 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 current proposed projects in downtown because of the, you know, the the you know, the six month, you know, and extended it to a few months to nine months. Um if this was if this was directed to, you know, eleven thirteen East Pleasant Street. With regard to a building permit, it really wasn't going to have any impact. And again, I just wanna because they're not going to ask for their building permit until beyond that time. Um but again, I want to reiterate, reiterate that um there's so much progress being made with regard to the, you know, um the bylaw, you know, amendment amendments that the the planning department is bringing to the CRC. Uh and also to the, you know, the planning board. I just feel like we're we're doing what we need to be doing and um but again, I just there there's a paragraph there. The amount of time it will take to address all the goals, this is in the text, the moratorium is beyond the six or nine months, a lot in the moratorium language. Many of the goals listed already being addressed by community resource committee, the planning board, the planning department and town council. So that that's in our 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 memo to you. I just wanted to make sure that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Dorothy.
I have to keep my heart from beating too fast because I am feeling as some of the previous speakers have something called righteous anger. I want to say that I deal in reality, not fantasy. We do not have student housing downtown taking off the pressure so that private homes are being not turned into student housing. They're both happening all over town, north and south. All right, they're both happening. We cannot make a dent into it. And when you talk about it, what is the word? Creating apartments, creating homes or creating units? I believe that what we've been creating are units. They're not homes. They're not places that people would live. They're being rented by bed, which is how a flop house is rented. So I think we have to really look at what's going on. I understand why some of these things are happening, but I ask you, please don't pretend that things are other than they are. We have needs for student housing in this town. Yes, we do. We also have needs for affordable family housing and family housing that is kind of moderately affordable. So we're not doing what we need to do. What we did have a process when we were talking about um forty R, we had met in rooms with people. They gave their opinions. Do you know what? None of them suggested what's happening now downtown, none of them. But they were not listened to. They were ignored. I noticed that many things that were thought about are disappearing from some of the new zoning proposals. Um we talk about lively downtown. The new buildings have not brought anything there in terms of liveliness, because there's the stores, the places that we would go, that we have been going are not being put there. There are no new businesses. And people are feeling very threatened that the places they do go to, that they enjoy are not going to be there in a few years. So very soon you'll have a downtown that's an empty place, an empty canyon, a playground with no children. And I don't think that's really the vision of Amherst that we want. So I'm asking people to kind of stop thinking of your ideological positions that this is that and that is that and just say, what's really happening? And what do we need to do to get the town that we need and we deserve? Thank you.
Are there any other counselor comments at this time? Shalani.
Um I hmm. Yeah, um I was wondering how the moratorium is going to increase family housing. And and uh what I'm also thinking is that as we it's not that the downtown housing is directly providing homes. And I don't know what the composition is of those homes. I can't really speak either way. But um what I do know is that we are working in CRC and our housing policy and all the other ways to create more family homes and we're thinking of ways to actively meet that goal of creating more starter homes and starting to engage with developers downtown. We're looking at grants. We're looking at different ways, but I don't see how the moratorium is leading to uh affordable housing. If anything, it's increasing our cost of housing or construction in town. Because we know that just by economics, when we stop the supply and there's a demand, it's increasing the overall cost of housing in our town. We have hi- higher property taxes because we don't, we have all these underutilized spaces. We're losing uh revenue from town. It's increasing property taxes. Uh it increases the risks of builders when you put moratoriums. I spoke to several builders, not from Amherst, so they don't, they have nothing to do with Amherst. This was just independent people. I'm like, moratorium, what comes to mind as a developer? This is actually the owner of Florence Market in Northampton. And I said, moratorium, what does that bring to mind? And he said it increases immediately. He said increases the risk and uncertainty of building in any town, which means it increases my cost automatically of lawyers and the um the supply and the labor, the general contractors need to work the network of building trade specialists and time and through the construction process. So all of this, so these are the unintended, you know, ideally, it sounds great. Can we just hit pause for a moment? And let's all think and let's hire a person. But that pause has unintended consequences. And that's what I'm hoping that all of us can bring attention to is how is it going to actually impact the goals that we're setting for a town in terms of affordable housing, in terms of um making our community thrive. And in terms of losing businesses, I spoke to uh Mercantile Store before they closed. Why are you closing? And he said, there are not enough buyers. The only people who come are students. So if we really want our downtowns to thrive, please use Amherst Books, please use Farmers Market, please come down and shop more and use the spaces downtown. That's how the businesses will thrive. It's not because of the buildings that people stopped shopping downtown. It's because of the internet.
I need you to wrap up.
Yeah, thank you.
Kathy.
I I just want to respond to one earlier comment. Um you know, my hope is that it's pretty clear there's not support for the moratorium, but what it has done is it's focused on some of the holes and gaps in our zoning laws. And I I saw the planning staff with inclusionary zoning, which was not on the original priority list. Suddenly it was back on the original priority list. Um that is our hope. And I heard comments about sidewalks and setbacks. I would love it if our zoning law talked about streetscapes. And this is not magical thinking. Um I sent a few, I started looking at other towns in terms, smart growth towns that were listed as models. And what do they do? When the buildings get really high, they ask the building to start further away from the street to allow room for public space. It doesn't, Mandy, eat into the road. It eats, it go, it measures it from the curb edge backwards. And the purpose is to allow a bench, allow a place to walk and allow um a a sense of space. So when you see a small building and if you walk around New York City, you don't feel as daunted by some of the buildings when there is they start back further back. So if we could get, if we could turn to those, Jack, in the planning board and say, what streetscape, it's not just downtown. It's every, so it's it's, yes, maybe it was a lack of vision that could not imagine that narrow pinch point on one East Pleasant, but I can with a ruler measure what is the existing sidewalk in public way. And I saw several towns just say, we're going to do this. And they are in the smart growth world. So this is not anti-development. They were saying, how can we be smart? So the way we develop really matters. And so if we could get moving on some of those, and I think the hundreds of people that signed or sent us letters, that's what they're really asking for. To focus on streetscape, focus on public way, focus on climate issues. It is not a stop building housing. People want the housing. It's really thinking about how we do it really matters. So if we could leave this and say, these are the things we really want to put. There is, these measures are not in our zoning law. We really have holes in our current zoning law compared to what I see in a lot of, not all places, but a lot of other places that are considered models. And they did lots of changes. So it wasn't just they did it all at once, but there were changes and changes and changes and they built up a body of work. So that's all I want to say on this. So that's the intent, to spur action in the areas where we have gaps.
I'm going to take my opportunity as a counselor to speak. You may be surprised to learn that in the estimate of the upcoming census or the census that we just completed, we're actually moving to about forty-one thousand plus people. We are a college town. It's why many of us came to move here. It's why many of us stay. And even the people who come here after retirement move here because of what a college town has to offer. So we're a community of forty-one thousand people. We're not a community of twenty-five residents. And we need to be seriously thinking about the housing capabilities for all of that. I want to just really compliment the planning board, CRC and also the planning and especially the planning staff for everything they're trying to do to bring forward some seriously good proposed planning changes in Amherst. These are things that have been out there for a long time. We have an opportunity. Our opportunity is thinking to the future. It's not thinking about what we used to be or what we would like to think we always used to be. And so we need to think about where does commerce really go these days? What really makes for a vibrant downtown? And how do we live as forty-one thousand residents, not twenty-five? Um so are there other comments? All right, this is the first reading, so we're going to go on to the next uh bylaw. And actually, let me just mention a couple of things before we do that. Have to get a light on here. Thank you. Um first of all, the next three bylaws kind of fit together. And I think Chris and her staff can provide that picture of how they fit together. They're recommending, these are recommended zoning amendments that have been provided to the town council in its capacity as a legislative body. The town council can adopt, we can refer to committees and planning boards, or we can do nothing, or we can delay them. Doing nothing means the town council does not want to move forward with this bylaw change. There is no requirement for the town council to act on a staff initiated proposed by the town manager bylaw. And there is no requirement for the town council to act now if it doesn't want to act. Having said that, I want to make sure people are aware that the apartment bylaw was one of the items on the town council list that had voted on on January fourth. The mixed-use building and parking was initiated through the planning department and building commissioner through the and proposed by the town manager, again, consistent with state law. CRC thought that these amendments were ready to go to the town council. I don't want to put words in Mandy Jo's mouth and I'd like her to speak to that. And Chris and Rob have met with the individual members of the planning board and believed that they had resolved their issues. And the planning board, I understand, Jack, will be meeting on July fourteenth for additional time to review zoning amendments and will, and at that time we'll be discussing excuse me, apartment, mixed-use buildings and parking at that time. We are not acting tonight to adopt these bylaws. We are only acting tonight to refer for further consideration and then they have to go through the cycle and come back to us. So um the, I'm going to ask, I believe, Chris, you indicated that Maureen Pollock, who is a planner of the town, will be doing this presentation. We're going to go through all three of the bylaws together because although they are separate bylaws, they are actually intertwined, intertwined. So Maureen, please.
Yes, uh thank you, everyone. Uh my name is Maureen Pollock. I'm one of the staff planners with the town of Amherst. And I'm here to give you a brief uh presentation um of the zoning amendment proposals we've been diligently working on uh regarding the mixed-use building, apartment and parking. So we'll first start with the mixed-use building. Uh so ours, uh existing zoning bylaw provides minimal standards for mixed-use buildings. Um there is no definition for uh the mixed-use building in in our zoning bylaw. There are limited uh standards um in one of the zoning districts, which is the commercial district. Um but uh there is in general very middle, minimal standards uh for this section. Our proposal strategies it are to define the mixed-use building use in Article twelve. Provide standards for uses located on the first floor throughout all the zoning districts. Diversify the amount of bedroom counts for each unit. Um and to apply design review principles and standards. And so uh our proposed definition with uh uh as shown on the slide is a mixed-use building is a building containing one or more dwelling units in combination with permitted non-residential uses in accordance with Article three. Um we have proposed conditions and standards for the uh mixed-use uh building section. Uh the first one uh is about uh standards related to the use on the first or ground floor. So um on the first or ground floor, there would be a maximum of sixty percent of gross floor area uh for the combination of residential use or parking, um including incidental or associated spaces. Um examples of that would be storage, required entries, uh stairs, elevators, towers, things of that nature. And then there would be a minimum of forty percent gross floor area um for permitted non-residential uses and not including parking. Um and other proposed uh standards and conditions would get into dwelling units and enclosed parking on the first or ground floor would need to be located at the rear of the building and would need to be designed to reduce the visibility from the public right away or uh walkways. Um it and it would also address sloping lots or or lots with multiple frontages. Uh it would uh also get into diversifying bedroom counts for ten-unit plus mixed-use buildings. Um so and what that means is no more than fifty Um, so, and what that means is no more than fifty percent of the total number of dwelling units can have the same bedroom count. So if there, you, if you had a mixed-use building and let's say it was a building with fifteen units, uh, no more than fifty percent of those uh could just be, you know, studio apartments or one bedrooms, they would have to diversify them, the sort of the different bedroom counts for each of those units. And um, and then also apply the design review principles and standards and um, the board um, that would be, you know, reviewing uh and making decision about mixed-use building with, uh, may refer the application to the design review board for advisory review and recommendations. And now moving on to apartments. Um, so I'll walk you through what's existing and what we are proposing. So the existing definition is a residential use um consisting of one or more buil- one or more buildings, each building containing uh no fewer than three, no more than twenty-four dwelling units. And then I'll walk you through the existing standards and conditions. So the development location of an apartment, building or buildings would need to be located close to a heavily traveled street or streets, close to a, uh, to a business, commercial or education, educational district or in an area already developed for multi-family use. Um, continuing with the existing standards and conditions, the development would need to be connected to sewer, it would need to meet the de- uh, the dimensional regulations under the zoning bylaw. Um, there are special provisions for the neighborhood business zoning district. There is a language about uh, the bedroom count, no more than fifty percent of the total number of dwelling units, maybe of any uh one size. And uh, they would need to uh, apply the design review principles and standards. And so uh, our proposal for apartments would be to remove the maximum number of units allowed per building opposed to what is uh currently uh written in the bylaw, which is um having a maximum of twenty-four units per building. Um, update the standards and conditions regarding uh uh diversifying the bedroom count for um ten-unit-plus buildings, um, which that language would be, um, this would be uh the exact language that is in the proposed mixed-use building um proposal. And also about enclosed parking in a apartment building, uh, which would say um exactly as the proposal for the mixed-use building, which is that the, if there is enclosed parking, like, you know, in like a garage, under the, a parking garage um under the building, that, that parking would need to be in the rear of, of the building and, and it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be uh able to be visible from the public right away. And uh, we are proposing to revise the permitting path uh for uh apartments um for two zoning districts. Um, so we're proposing that in the general business zoning district, it would be allowed by uh approval of a special permit. And in the village center residence zoning district, it would be allowed by site plan review. And moving on to parking, the existing um language for parking under Article seven, we're only proposing just a, a, a small uh section of that overall article, and it has to do with uh the, the parking space requirement. So the existing bylaw says for dwellings, including apartments, there needs to be two parking spaces for each dwelling. And so the, our proposal um gets into providing a, a breaks, breaks that down about the parking space requirement by residential use. And then it also provides uh more specific criteria for review um by the board uh at hand. So here, the specific residential uses for uh, that would require two parking spaces for each dwelling unit would be for a, a one-family, uh, single-family home, a duplex, a townhouse and a subdivisible slash converted dwelling. And um, and then also we're proposing that for apartments, mixed-use buildings and supplemental dwelling units, that adequate parking would need to be uh, would be a requirement for each dwelling unit. And there is a specific criteria that the applicant would need to submit to, you know, the planning board or, or the ZBA to provide evidence of, you know, what, what, what determines the um the adequate amount of parking. And so such uh specific factors that the applicant would need to provide in the board that would need to review and uh deliberate on would be um factors such as bedroom count, analysis of traffic impact reports, proximity and connectivity to downtown, public transit and/or public parking, including on-street and off-street parking, availability to alternative modes of transportation, tenant lease restrictions relative to parking and shared or leased parking. And um, that is all I have for the slides. And um, I don't know if folks want me to go through the actual proposed language. This was a snapshot of the, of the proposed language, uh, but condensed into one PowerPoint presentation. So I'm happy to take questions or.
Uh, thank you, first of all, Maureen. Uh, and we can take the slides down for a moment. Um, I just want to mention that it, each of these bylaws has to be treated separately in terms of how we act, although the action may be exactly the same action. Um, and we will have to do them in, you know, uh, the order that we have them, which is apartment, the mixed-use building and then parking. But in order to um get going on this, let's see if we have questions from the council first in general about the overall package. Dorothy.
Um, just a, first I'm going to start with asking for a clarification. Um, so when you listed the actions that this will, the, the places that these proposals will go, um, did you say that the clock wasn't, was not starting now or that it was starting now?
Way the motions are written, they would actually, we would be referring them for hearing. And so the clock does start.
Well, tha- that presents a problem because, you know, I do attend um remotely, of course, most of the zoning and design review board and uh meetings. And I know that the planning board has had very little time to discuss these, which would be, be the normal case. And so that the clock starting now uh is a problematic issue. I will also just mention a few things, um, I'm going to be very reasonable that I notice. One is mixed-use used to have the words commercial and retail. And that has been replaced with non-residential. Um, I think that speaks volumes because we're no longer talking about having uh the interesting vital services and um retail establishments that were advertised when we talked about redeveloping the downtown. And we're just talking about non-residential, which seems to be parking on the first floor of a building. Also, the major percentages have changed from previous times to reduce the amount of time that would be used for anything that was non-residential. I also don't see any words here about um setbacks, height, uh, shared space that would be uh, used either by the public or by the people who live there. Those used to be things that, in various drafts, and that, some of these things have gone through many, many drafts. There are things that were talked about at length, and they were consi- considered to be important, but I noticed that they're not here anymore. So that's mixed-use. Um, on apartment buildings, there's still the problem with confusing an apartment if it starts with three, um, no fewer than three, confusing with a triplex, but that's kind of minor. Um, the apartment has no standards either, just a line saying need to apply design review principles and standards. But if those weren't important enough to include in here, I do wonder what they are because there's nothing about the apartment being, having green space or any space for tenants to sit or gather. And um, certainly, there's not much about uh parking uh that would happen there. Then when we get to parking, it gets even more problematic.
You know, Dorothy, I'm going to ask that we, uh, we're going to just have to split these up, okay? Cause, okay, make sure that, so let's just go.
We talk about mixed-use first?
Uh, apartments.
Okay, apartments. All right, I'll save my comments on parking till we get to that later. How's that?
Great, thank you.
Great.
Um, I'm trying to see whether Jack is still with us or not, but.
He is, but he's in the audience.
Okay, so, you know, one of the things I, I noticed, Lynn, I know you want us to split them up, and I will. Uh, but uh, the planning board has been in the process of discussing these. So I'll just start with mixed-use. If you want me to start with pa- parking, I'm looking even on Chris's schedule. They're going to focus on.
Start with apartments.
Part, apartments. Apartments are on the schedule for July fourteenth for a more in-depth discussion of them. And that hopefully will be partly, they've been discussing mixed-use. They have been proposed as a package to the planning board, but they are just starting to talk about them. So I don't know why they're be, in front of us now. I think it would make sense to wait for us, the planning board, to have time to work on this. And then we come back on our August, the August meeting to look at a revised set of proposals that is coming through the planning board to us, similar to what was happening with others. So I don't want to go into each of them because what's been happening is they've been shifting. So when the public is coming into the planning board meetings and we start one, the next version of it is changing, and I think that's appropriate. We have a planning board that's very active, and I want to give them time. And I thought our process was if it's active at the planning board, get them to the point where they've made their amendments, whether it's a government, and then it comes to us. I'm not sure what you have it now.
Okay, Mandy Jo, did you want to, please, you have your hand up, thank you.
Look, it's my understanding that the planning board, as well as CRC, at their last review, said this can go to the council, it's ready for a hearing, but the planning board wanted to see it one more time and felt that it was okay to see it after it was referred for hearing. The current plan is to hold a joint hearing on July twenty-first, and the planning board chair has agreed that that is a logical day that, that would get published next week. Um.
But, Mandy, there was a.
So, so my, but, but what, the point is, my understanding is the planning board is okay with this timeline, and they have approved this timeline, including a referral now that starts the clock, even though they still have it on their schedule for the next meeting.
So that was taken at a public meeting of the planning board, and I just missed it, where they said, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the council. I, did I miss that? Um, I don't know what date it happened.
It, I haven't been watching the planning meetings, that's, that's what I've been told. At least that's my understanding of things that have gone regarding this schedule.
I'm going to call on Chris Brestrop, who has her hand up.
So um, I don't think the planning board actually said um this is ready to go to town council. I think the planning board reviewed this, and one member of the planning board said, I don't think this is ready to go, and he gave some reasons. And Rob Mora and I met with him last Tuesday. And we believe we've resolved all of his issues. I don't remember the planning board, any other member of the planning board saying this wasn't ready to go, with the possible exception of Jen at McGowan, who hasn't been able to attend all the meetings lately. So um, I think with one more meeting, which is happening on July fourteenth, the planning board would be able to bring this to a public hearing on the twenty-first. And then if they're not ready to vote on it after that, then they'll continue the public hearing to another date. So um, you know, it's kind of, it's a process, and the planning board's going to have at least two more times to talk about it. One is on July fourteenth and one is on July twenty-first. And then um, you know, if, as I said, if they're not ready to vote on it, they won't vote. They'll continue the public hearing or continue their discussion to another date. So I, I think that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. Rob's been following this too, and maybe he has um some further comments on that matter.
Rob.
Yes, so I, I, I agree with all that, and I'll just add that um, you know, working with the planning board and responding to their comments, we, we certainly feel comfortable that, that the current draft addresses uh, the, the comments that we've received to this point, uh, with the exception of one item. So it's the uh sixty-forty split that I think is the remaining question. And I, and I feel like at least, you know, the conversations that I've been in, in the meetings that I've uh, you know, uh, heard the discussion take place, that there's probably a big difference of opinion from the CRC uh than with the planning board on that matter. And we, we felt like this was a good time to move that forward and let the public hearing process uh work through that issue and ultimately end with a recommendation from each of the, the committees on that matter, which was our last remaining item that we were aware of.
Thank you, uh, Alyssa.
I just wanted to clarify, so in the report, I, cause I'm now honestly lost track of where we are. I thought we were talking about apartments at this particular moment. When it's talking about bedroom count, and I appreciate that it says, see Article twelve, affordable housing, except the next time you publish this, would you say, see Article twelve, housing comma affordable? Cause that really threw me off when I couldn't find it, because for some reason we defined it that way, under twelve-point whatever. Um, but my question about that is, my question about twelve-point-two-five is just to be clear, because we talk about this over and over again. We, if somebody came in and wanted to build an apartment building, but it wasn't under forty-B, but they said, I want to build all studio apartments, similar to what we're doing on our Hampton Road, then we said, we could say, yes, that would be fine because of the affordability component. Just to be clear on where we are versus what we have to do through forty-B versus what we have to do another way. Or alternatively, then we said, oh, we want, that, they said, you know, what we really want to do? We want to build all three bedrooms for affordable family housing. And that would be okay despite this bedroom count comment because housing comma affordable would apply. And students would not be eligible, college students would not be eligible, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nope.
Darcy.
Yeah, I, I have comments on each one of these things, but I, I share Kathy's uh concern about the process here. It seems like it's pretty convoluted and that I think that there were at least some members of the planning board that were surprised to see this arrive at the town council. And I guess I'm wondering like um what, wh- what is the authority for bringing this forward by the planning board and the town manager as opposed to by the planning board? I, I feel like we need to postpone this because the process is messed up. Um, and I feel like you're telling us that the planning board didn't adequately finish their discussion. And it's supposed to come from the planning board um, according to the statute. So I guess, I'm, I'm just, you know, I, oh, I would support Kathy's suggestion that we just postpone this temporarily and then have our discussion then. Seems, it just seems like the process is messed up.
Mandy Jo.
The statute allows many different places for a zoning bylaw to be proposed from. The planning board can propose a zoning bylaw, but so can the town manager, the chief executive officer. And so this is coming from the town manager. Just like a counselor can propose it, and just like with the discussion we just had, ten residents through a petition can propose it. And so this is directly in front of the council due to the proposal from the planning department, which is coming through the town manager's office, perfectly allowable under seat, under the MGLs. Um, the planning board and CRC have reviewed them, but when the planning department, if a proposal comes from the planning department, deems it ready for council to refer for a recommendation, it can come and the president can put it on the agenda.
I challenge you to find that language, Mandy Jo.
I'll pull it up in about ten seconds when I look at our rules of procedure, if you give me that amount of time to get to the right rule.
Obviously, I trust her. I'm sure she can. Yeah.
You have your hand up, I'm going to call on you.
I think what Darcy is challenging is the MGL part, Mandy, on where it says town manager can be one of the people bringing it, because I don't see it in the MGL part.
It is in our rules of procedure number five by the town manager or their designee. Rule eight-point-one, proposed zoning bylaw shall be initiated and introduced by submission to the council in one of the following manners in accordance with MGL. in one of the following manners in accordance with MGL Chapter forty A, Section five. Some of them are not just MGLs, but number five of that is by the town manager or their designee.
I think the state law only allows it under the charter.
We as a council can allow it any way we want, and we've allowed it under our rules of procedure by the town manager. If you want to change the rules, you need to provide a, you need to propose a rule of procedure change.
Town manager, please.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, that is in the council's rules of procedures where it's explicit that the town manager can initiate. It doesn't mean the council has to move on it, but it does allow for different vet, different avenues to present items to the council, multiple avenues. It's not, uh, it's not restrictive that way.
Darcy, you still have your hand up.
Yeah, I I I still have my uh, problems with this.
So first of all, we've clarified that in fact this, bringing these forward were allowed. I also want to point out that in the menu of, and essentially calendar, you recall, the town council passed the whole zoning thing on January fourth of this year. Then it went to the planning staff and said, would you make sense of this for us and put it in an order and clustered, if you will, the way you, it will make sense for you to work through this with us? And they did that. And these three items were on that list. Okay, so this is not a surprise. Okay? The, then in addition to that, as Mandy Jo and Paul have both clarified, there's state law, there is also our rules of procedure. And we clarified quite a while back, different ways to bring zoning forward. And that we haven't violated any of, either the state law or the rules of procedure by bringing forward. The other question I'm hearing is whether or not you feel, and in your judgment, that the planning board has discussed these enough in an informal way to have been brought to us to then be referred back for hearing. That's the question that is on, that I'm hearing from the group, okay? And I will tell you that we sent an entire list of various zoning laws. Uh, in fact, we were going to include at least two or three more tonight. Thank God we didn't. Um, we sent the entire list, we said, which of these are ready? And what came back is what is on your agenda tonight. So it's not like this was a willy-nilly decision to put them on the agenda tonight. It was a planned decision, um, including setting up actual target dates for hearings. Mandy Jo, did you have a further comment on that before I go to Alyssa?
Not as CRC chair.
Okay, then Alyssa.
Yeah, I mean, from what I'm hearing, I don't feel like we are doing something outside of normal process. I don't feel like we are pressuring planning board, we should not be pressuring planning board, and I don't see that we are. They've indicated, Brestrop has indicated, that they have time to discuss this before the actual hearing. We'd like to notice the hearings, we'd like to move forward with this. I don't know why we would want to spend more time arguing about components of it at the town council level, rather than letting the planning board and CRC do what I consider to be their job. And if it turns out it's just so badly broken that it's not usable, then that's fine, and they can turn it down. But I'd much rather give it over to them rather than have the town council argue about the nuances of it before it goes to them. The other point I had is just a question that maybe can't be answered yet, but is a question on the parking one, which I, again, I'm not sure where we are in terms of this list, but I would like some information provided at the hearing and in the planning board and CRC reports, doesn't have to be tonight, as to why we choose to draw the lines where we do on how many parking spaces based on types of dwellings. Because it gets a little hard for me to understand why townhouse is the same as one family detached dwelling, rather than being the same as apartments, mixed-use buildings, and supplemental dwelling units when it comes to parking. And I'm sure there's state of the art on this, I'm sure there's typical practice. I just don't understand it, and it feels like we've been dividing it up various different ways for a long time, without any real explanation as to what that is. So if that could happen through the hearing process and reporting out process, that would be really helpful.
So what I would like to do is now go to the point of saying, are there any other additional questions on apartments?
Yes, 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 yes.
Dorothy?
Um, okay. I don't see that this um, says anything about um, height, setback, and common spaces. So it's so, it's just so bland and, I mean, what does it actually say? It 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 enlarges the number of rooms, which is something that has been discussed in detail, as something that people have felt was, it was an artificial reduction, that it's good to increase the number of apartment units, okay? It does that. But I I don't see that it met any of the other um, issues that were brought up with apartments. It doesn't tell you what it can be or can't be, doesn't say how many floors. It it just says it can be more, and it talks about the mix of apartments. So those were things that certainly I have listened to discussions on those, and I understand those items. But it's what's not there that bothers me.
Okay. We're sticking with apartments for the time being. Okay, Chris, did you have a response that you wanted to add to that?
So yeah, um, so the response to height and setbacks um, is that it depends on what zoning district this building is in. If it's in the BG zoning district, it has certain limitations. If it's in the BL, it has other limitations. So each zoning district has its own dimensional requirements that these buildings will be, uh, will be required to meet. Um, in terms of common spaces, we decided that um, we would rather have that be part of the discussion of the consultant, who's going to be helping us with design guidelines. And the consultant will help us to establish um, criteria for open spaces for the different zoning districts. We can't really establish um, those criteria for apartments when we know that apartments could be located in the residential village center, the business neighborhood, the RG, the BG, the BL. They're going to be different in all those different districts. So we really need to think about this with the consultant. Thank you.
So if I could just respond briefly, that sounds all very reasonable, and I I totally accept that. But then I wonder if you pass this zoning amendment, then you're telling people they can build apartments before those, I would say, crucial items have been decided. So I see a problem with that.
Maureen?
Thank you, Chris, for talking about the the height, the setback um, in relation to um, the dimensional regulations of Table three, which are set by the zoning district. Um, and to, and so um, as Chris had said, that, you know, when we do hire a design consultant, we we want to look at those sorts of things, not by use, but by district. Um, throughout, you know, the downtown, the village centers, perhaps the whole town. Um, and about opens, and the same for um, project open space or the concept of frontage zones, uh, which, uh, if you were at the last CRC meeting last week, um, you would know what we're talking about, um, about uh, the proposed uh, BL overlay district. Um, but in the meantime, um, the zoning bylaw does get into open space. It does get into recreational uh, spaces um, under both uh, ten point three eight and under eleven point two four, which um, both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals need to meet, make their findings as they review and deliberate on uh, site plan review applications as well as special permit applications. So it is there, it's actually applicable to, you know, all uses that come before either of those boards for review and um, and deliberation. Thank you.
Darcy?
Yes, um, I think I'm going to vote against referring this bylaw. Because at first glance, it looks like, um, I, you know, I'm wondering like, who is, who is, why do we need this? Um, it looks at first glance like definitely um, developers would benefit greatly from this amendment. Um, and I'm assuming UMass. But if our go, if our goal as a town is to increase opportunities for local businesses by creating mixed-use dwellings, why would we create a new option that wouldn't include those businesses on the first floor? And I guess, I just, I'm not sure why we would need to amend our current unit limit for apartments by creating this new kind of mega apartment building option.
Um, Maureen?
So, yeah, they, uh, thank you, Darcy. Um, so the intent, the intention of removing the maximum number of units allowed per building, which it is currently the maximum, maximum allowed is twenty-four units per building, and we're proposing the removal of that, uh, is to um, is to uh, encourage more um, housing opportunities uh, in in Amherst um, and uh, for apartments. And if you look at, this is a condensed PowerPoint of many PowerPoints that I've given over the months about apartments. And uh, so in some of the the earlier uh, PowerPoints, I I provide examples of approved apartment buildings through through the years. And there really is such a very limited amount of apartment buildings that are uh, approved due to the the um, the maximum number of units allowed. And so what we're seeing is that there are a lot of mixed-use building developments in town. And some, you know, developers are finding these loopholes currently of saying, oh, this is a mixed-use building, and I have a two hundred square foot office on the first floor. And so it's, you know, technically a mixed-use building. And we're trying to discourage things like that. And that specific development um, that I'm referring to, which is along University Drive, um, would work perfectly well for uh, an apartment building. And so um, that is the intention of of that speci- specific proposal.
Kathy, we're staying on apartments for the moment.
Yep. I I got it, Lynn. I can focus, I'm going to focus. So uh, Maureen, building on what you just said, I think what I heard is that um, there are instances now where people opt for mixed use because they can put more units. Um, but I thought we wanted mixed use in downtown and village centers because of the commercial side of it. Um, so will this not, or potentially, does this change that apartment buildings can now be? I don't know what the right number is, and twenty-four has always felt to me like, where'd that number come from? But will this lead to fewer and fewer mixed-use buildings and more and more apartment buildings, um, including village centers and uh, the BG area? You know, I could see why you want an apartment building in a more resident, if we can have it in residential at all. So that that's my question, will you get the flip side? Because I think what we've seen is a move to mixed use because there's no limit on units. And will this now flip it the other way? Will have the preference being apartment buildings with no commercial or retail space, just apartments?
Chris, I'm going to call on you first.
So we're recommending that um, apartment buildings be by special permit in the downtown for just that reason, because we want to encourage first floor um, use that is not residential. And uh, so we're making that change. Currently apartments are allowed in the downtown by site plan review. And we want to change that to special permit to encourage the um, the mixed use on the ground floor.
And Chris, just can I ask, I see you, on RVC, you've gone the other way. So is there not that concern in RVC, you've gone from special permit to SPR?
May I answer that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so um, RVC is a residential zoning district, so it makes sense to have residential uses there as opposed to um, encouraging um, retail and commercial uses on the ground floor. Um, they would still be allowed, but they would be allowed by special permit. Those uses, as in a mixed-use building.
Thank you.
Apartments would be allowed by site plan review.
And so ju- just like then, I just want to, so the special permit in your mind, BG, there would be an understanding, it would be more rare to authorize it in BG because you want the retail. So it wouldn't just be, oh, we've got it SP, but but that's the intention. There would be, I think of legislative language intent, you know, something that said, what, why did we do that? Um, because that would be what I would think otherwise, you know, five years from now. Just why do we have that? It's, that's what the intent is.
Chris?
So my understanding is that um, when developers are presenting ideas to finance, financiers, banks, whatever, that um, if something is required by site plan review, the bank or the financier is more likely to jump at the chance to finance it, because it's more of a sure thing that they can get it through, whereas a special permit is more um, restrictive. It's actually, um, you know, the the perma-granting body has the right to say no more strictly than um, with site plan review. So it's a little bit of a discouragement if you have um, apartments by special permit in the BG zoning district. It's less of a, it's less of a sure thing.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions about apartments? Kathy? All right, then I am going to um, read the motion, and I'm going to be looking for a second. It's to refer the proposed amendment to zoning bylaw, Section three point three two three. Apartments to the planning board and the community resource committee for hearings held no later than September first, two thousand twenty-one, and for a written recommendation and explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan from the planning board to the town council and to the community resources committee, no later than twenty-one days after the planning board hearing, and for community resources to send a written recommendation to the town council and to submit all materials to the Geo Governance Organization Legislation Committee to review or review of clarity, consistency, and actionability within sixty days of the hearing held by the Community Resources Committee. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any other question or discussion? Great, then we're going to move to a vote. Um, we will start with Lynn Griesmer, and I vote yes. Mandy Jo?
Hi.
Dorothy Pam?
No.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
No.
Shalony Balmil?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
No.
The vote is nine in favor, four opposed, none, no extensions, and no absences. So we're going to go on to questions that you might have with regarding to the mixed-use building that have not already been asked. This is zoning bylaw, Section three point three two three.
Excuse me, three point three two five?
Thank you. I was, I looked at that and I said, something's not right. Uh, three point three two five, mixed use. Thank you, Chris. Kathy?
Um, yeah, I have two questions. Um, the first is on, I I think whether it was Rob or one of you said sixty forty or forty sixty was one of the sticking points. In two thousand sixteen, the planning board recommended to town meeting that the um, maximum- Maximum non-residential, I mean, the maximum residential on the first floor be 40%. Now we're going to 60%, so I was wondering why. If it's a mixed use building, why wouldn't you want to have? More than half of the first floor be commercial retail, something other than residential? So that's question number one. And then question number two is the draft I saw, um, being discussed in the. June 16th meeting, um, had a definition of some, some percentage of public space. And that's not in this, so I was wondering why that was dropped. So it's those two questions.
Um, Chris or Rob or Maureen, who's going to answer?
I can start to answer and then Robin might chime in. So, given the realities of, um, the retail use. The fact that, um, developers are finding it very difficult to find tenants for their retail spaces. We thought that 40% was more reasonable. We know that, you know, one East Pleasant Street has had vacant space on their ground floor for a couple of years now. Probably more than a couple of years and they, they managed to fill one space, but not the other. And, you know, so they're struggling. And we know that retail is not a thriving. Way to go now to make money. So, um, we just didn't think that 50% requiring 50% of the space to be, uh, retail or commercial was, um, reasonable. That's answered the question one. The second part is, um, the draft from 616 and the percentage of public open space. So again, we decided that it was better to leave a discussion about public open space. To the discussion that we're going to have with our consultants. Because mixed use buildings can go in many different zoning districts throughout town. And to, um, make a requirement for a particular amount of open space. That was a blanket, um, requirement, just didn't seem to make sense for all the different districts where a mixed use building can go. So that would be my response, I don't know if Maureen or Rob has anything else to add.
Maureen or Rob? Nope.
Uh, yeah, uh, yep, uh, just, uh, add that, um, you know, the, the, the fifth, we had an earlier version where we were proposing 50%. Non-residential use and that's one of the things that we've been able to actually have conversations with the developers about. And learn how difficult it is, as Chris has stated, that we've been told to fill these spaces. And that led us to look at what's actually been done over the last 10 years or so. And we found that the non-residential spaces, you know, go as low as 2% of the square footage of the first floor. And rarely over 40, I think we might've had one example where we, we had 42% or so, but most of them are much lower. And just as a reminder that currently we have no standards, so this would be a really big change to the bylaw to establish even 40%.
But the, the current bylaw in the definition has that percentage because you've knocked it out. So I guess that just hasn't been applied. So in the definition of mixed use, we had the, um, no more than 40, 40% residential. But as I saw your numbers, Chris, uh, your staff numbers, we haven't been anywhere near. The non-residential side, so it's in that definition of standards. It's in a small, it's very small typeface, but.
Yeah, if I could answer that. Yeah, and so, uh, that's a good point, Kathy. Unfortunately, that's, uh, so in the, unfortunately, the, in the current bylaw. There is a ratio of residential and non-resident- residential on the first floor, but it's only for one zoning district. Which is the commercial zoning district, it's not applicable to all zoning districts across the town. And so this by, bylaw proposal is trying to capture. The uses on the first floor, um, throughout town and not just, uh, one commercial, one district. It was probably because, uh, I, I don't know why that came about. Why, why was there just a focus on the commercial district, uh, for, for uses on the first floor? But.
I just have to say, I'm confused because I was hearing that. Oh, I'm sorry, I withdraw that, it was public spaces that was going to be dealt with with the consultant, not the percentage. Thank you.
Kathy? And this is the repeat about the project of open space, you know, as, as we all are in agreement. We were going to hire a design consultant to talk about these items like streetscapes. Uh, setbacks, maybe building heights, et cetera, et cetera. But in the meantime, the zoning bylaw law does currently have language, uh, about, you know, recreational space and o- open space. Uh, and those can be found under sections 11.24 and, uh, 10.38. Which both the zoning board of appeals and the planning board make specific findings as they make their decisions about the special permit. The variance, the special, uh, site plan review application, um, that is before them.
Thank you. Darcy?
Uh, yeah, I guess I just echo Kathy's concern again about, um. Flipping those percentages, um, in the new version. And I, I hear what you're saying about how. The current situation, um, is difficult for renting that space. But it, it isn't, isn't our goal to? Figure out how we can do that, you know, are we? Going to look at different models like small shops along the lines of. Thorne's Market, you know, renting small spaces on the first floor. Whatever, you know, just so that we can. Really reach for this goal of having a vibrant business community. Downtown. And if we give that away with this. Bylaw, I'm, I'm worried that. That we'll just be using, you know, we'll be using that first floor space just for. Apartments and parking.
Okay, any other comment or question? Dorothy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little, um, interested in. Now that you're fixing the apartment definition. Which by taking, removing the things that made developers not want to use it. The question is, and, and we have mixed use, not really, you've returned, we've taken out the words retail and commercial. And the developers tells you how difficult it is to fill that. Then the question is, why would someone want to do mixed use? And, uh, and I'm asking this question, um, I have heard. That mixed use allows you to use cheaper construction on the upper floors. Would that be an incentive? Or is it that mixed use, since parking is considered a non-residential use? Is it in a mixed use building, you can park cars inside your building, which you can't do in an apartment? Or is it that you think, some people think, well, I can't get 60% of commercial retail, but I might be able to get 40%? So, um, this is really kind of like, now that you're fixing the apartment definition. Would there still be the interest and demand for mixed use? And if so, why?
Chris?
Certainly in the BG zoning district, there would still be an interest in mixed use because apartments would be by special permit. And mixed use would be by site plan review.
Okay. Um. Sarah?
So I guess part of me is having a really hard time with people just saying, well, you know, brick and mortar, it's gone. Because I, I wonder what Hadley would say, I mean, obviously they have more space than we do. But that's where everybody shops. Um, and then even Northampton, which I know has had its problems during COVID, but it's still holding on to an interesting. Shopping district and I applaud, I applaud the fact that we are looking into, uh, cultural districts. And I think that's absolutely fantastic and will definitely draw people. But I'm having a really, a, a big problem with saying, eh, I don't know, just retail doesn't work anymore. That I think we should still. And I also have a problem with the fact that we allowed these mixed use buildings. And they, we, it's true, they were sold to us as, and we will have businesses and businesses that will bring. People downtown into village centers. My other question is, I'm wondering, since you're saying that there are certain, you know, buildings that are having a hard time and they haven't been able to rent things out. Um, so does this mean like, and for us in district one, I would ask about the Beacon project, which doesn't have, has done some amazing things. Um, we have an, an art gallery, right, and a general store, and that's fantastic. But that's a, uh, building where, you know, we allowed way more units because they absolutely did put in. Uh, you know, modest and low income units, which is fantastic. But I'm wondering would, so would that be sort of retroactive? And I, I'm glad that we're helping developers, I don't want to see anything go under. But I'm wondering what that, does that mean to? Um, density in places where we don't really have the infrastructure. So some of these things I think are excellent, but I'm wondering if we're also thinking about. Other consequences.
Any comment on any of that?
You know, a- as, as we've, um. Have worked on and, and talked so much about these ratios of 60%, you know, residential on the first floor. Um, in a minimum of 40% of non-residential use. There are no standards for the zoning throughout the zoning districts about this. And so this is a start and it's also a. A reflection of the current, um, you know, market of, of non-residential uses, which, you know, includes retail, commercial, office. Things of those nature. Um, and, you know, there are, you know, a, a, you know, Northampton, uh, uh. Does have, uh, you know, wonderful storefronts, but there are a lot of vacant storefronts there. Post-COVID, during COVID, pre-COVID. And, um. And it's not unique to Northampton and it's not unique to Ayrmerst. It's, uh, the current state of, of retail across the country. And so we're trying to be, uh. We want to push these standards forward because we want to promote these, uh, mixed use. Buildings specifically in downtowns and all the uses. But we have to, uh, be cognizant of, 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 you know, where we are. And we want to attract developers to, to say, all right, I can provide at least a minimum of 40% of, 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 of non-residential use. But it, it wouldn't be, um, you know, it wouldn't be a, a higher percentage of that. And, uh, you know, perhaps in the future, we could reevaluate, um, those percentages. But I think this is a, a good start. Again, considering there are no standards in the zoning bylaw for the zoning districts.
Chris?
I wanted to respond to Dorothy's previous comment about, um, seeming to discourage retail and commercial. Use on the ground floor. So currently the mixed use building standard says that mixed use building. Is a building containing dwelling units in combination with permitted retail, business, institutional, government, public service, consumer service. Offer, office or similar principal uses and lawful accessory uses. Essentially, they're saying any use that's allowed in the zoning district in which the building is located. You can have that as your mixed use or non-residential portion of the building. So we're not restricting it in any way, if anything, we're broadening the concept of what could be, uh, allowed on the first floor of a mixed use building. So I just wanted to make that, uh, clear.
Thank you. Uh, Steve Schreiber?
Yeah, so I'm going to, um. A lot of my counselors or fellow counselors have already said this, but I, I agree with the comments that. Mixed use buildings in the BG zone. Or in, in the business, in the business center or the village center, I'm sorry, the downtown center or the village centers. Mixed use really should be defined as retail on the ground floor. And, you know, I don't know if it should be 50% or 60% or 40%. But I think that there is a huge retail demand. And I, I can't accept that the fact that the, um, one East Pleasant hasn't found a tenant or. The side that used to say Rufus King on it, or the Bulge Place can't find a tenant. As a sign that there is no demand for retail, so there's a mismatch. There's a mismatch in Ayrmerst and maybe everywhere of where the retail goes. And where, um, basically where things are. Like I shouldn't, like there are, there's retail. Public facing operations that are two floors up on, you know, walk-ups, you, you know, where Hastings is. That could easily or even more successfully be at the ground level. There are bike shops that are basically behind buildings and in basements. You, you know, those could be, you know, much more public facing. And as somebody else mentioned, it's not just the Hadley malls, but it's all the Hadley strip malls that have these really interesting shops. Like the sort of the, um. You know, marginal buildings out on Route 9 going towards Northampton, those would be wonderful shops to attract to Ayrmerst. So I don't know how we legislate, this is a very strong thread that, that went through those 999 signatures. And many of the letters we got, that people are. Kind of, um, really miss there being some kind of ground level retail. So I don't accept that Jeff Bezos has taken all retail away, he hasn't. There was a very active retail operation in and around Ayrmerst, it's just in unusual places. And I think that this is an opportunity to bring those into more usual places to make a kind of a more orderly town. So, um, we, I'm not a developer, I don't know what the numbers are, I know we're asking now a lot of developers with inclusionary zoning, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that a def- to me, a definition of mixed use is retail. In a downtown area, not these other institutional uses, et cetera. So. That's that.
Thank you, uh, Shalini.
So the question about retail, I think that we are, um. It would be definitely helpful to have actual, uh, developers in the conversation because. The conversations I've had with builders and developers, they actually do market research, like they don't just invest the money. And then hope that it will fill out, right? They do an assessment of demand for residents, for retail and all of that. So while we are hypothesizing here that we want more retail and whatnot. They actually go out and do the studies and the facts are that. At least in Ayrmerst, that, uh, retail is just the way it is in many different reasons. And I think that would be helpful to understand from, again, the developers, what are the specific reasons why? Retail is hard in our downtown, one is Amazon, of course. But there are other things that I understood, one of the reasons was like, you have a store like Urban Outfitters in Northampton. And they require that kind of depth for warehousing. So if you have a store, a retail store, they need that much space, not just for the display and showroom, but also for warehousing. And whatnot, and the way our mo- our street is configured, we don't, we are not really situated, we're not positioned for that kind of. Retail, uh, to happen. The other thing is we don't allow for strip malls like Hadley, we didn't want those kind of spaces. So that also limits, uh, our thing. And the third thing is, I think it would, um, be helpful, whatever we decide the ratio is. But giving businesses the flexibility where they want to situate, uh, just as an example, which I gave in CRC was. Um, that my understanding is there is an exploration of a project in the Mill District. Uh, where they want to convert, uh, and create a mixed use building there for residents and read, and have a bar. And a music venue, but they want to do the music venue in the basement and they want to do the bar on the terrace. And so they want the flexibility so that on the ground floor. Maybe just the frontal part 10% or something has a nice facade to keep the engagement going, so it's, it's not a residential. But there should be flexibility that they can actually have a fun terrace bar. And not force all the retail to be on the ground floor. So what I'm saying is that bringing in more of these discussions, and I know that BID and Mill District are considering public markets, how to create Thorne's Market kind of. Spaces, so there is all of these conversations happening and the more we can all work with the building community, the architects. The residents, you know, what are we willing to pay for locally? Like we had a retail, the co-op and it failed downtown. Right, so, okay, that's all for now.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say, I.
I appreciate Chris talking about broadening the concept. But, and I, and I like, love the image of flexibility and I hear what Steve is saying about retail. And those are things that, um, really encourage me. But I, we're doing that. You're saying you're broadening the concept, but you're limiting the amount of space that it's required to be in, and that doesn't make sense to me. When we talk about flexibility, I can see Shalini saying about a bar on the second floor and this on some. And I can see retail spaces like Thorn spaces. I just don't understand why you only want it to be forty percent of the space. It just doesn't make any sense to me because that changes. Spring Street is like that. It has very limited, uh, space. And they had talked about a gallery or something else, a coffee shop, whatever. They were just trying to get the minimum amount of space to do what they wanted and take the rest of it up with elevators and other things. So I'm pretty uncomfortable with the percentages.
Just as a clarification, Pat, uh, it's a minimum of forty percent would be, uh, for permitted non-residential use. So it's not saying maximum of forty percent.
Well, what is the sixty percent then? No more than sixty percent. So that kind of, so I hear what you're saying, Maureen, and I see that. Uh, but it, it does say no more than sixty percent, which means the developer can just fill it up the space with the things that they want. Uh, you know, in terms of elevators and things like that. So I, 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 I hear you and I see that, but it still feels tight and small for the actual reason of having a mixed-use building. Thanks. It's nice to see you.
Nice seeing you too.
Did you call on me?
Chris, yeah.
Yep. So the entire first floor, with the exception of stairs and elevators, could be retail or some use other than residential. Um, it could be a hundred percent, except for what I just mentioned. So there's no limitation on the amount of retail space or non-residential space that we're, uh, imposing. And we're just trying to, um, require developers to have more than these little postage stamps, which they currently are allowed to have of two hundred square feet of something that's not residential in a huge building. That's what we're trying to do.
Like Spring Street.
Thank you. Uh, Dorothy?
Well, I think that Steve brought a very important point. Yes, we didn't want to have the big malls, but he referred to the small shops that are in strip malls, shops that could easily fit in the ground floor of a mixed-use building in our downtown. But what is the big difference between where they are and what we have? And it's called parking. You can drive to them and park your car.
We're dealing with a mixed-use at this point. Thank you.
Okay, but, but I'm saying that a mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and no parking, that's one of the reasons why people are going to have problems. People want to be able to park their car if they're going to go to a store that's in a mixed-use building. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, so I'm happy to refer this over. One of the things, though, that I, I would like to come back to us, and, and we went through phases with this at town meeting where it got more and less traction. I'd like it to get more traction again, which is the idea of some actual examples of what it would look like in terms of these percentages, in terms of, you know, giving us some layouts. Because I think people have very different ideas and I agree with some sentiment that's been expressed that no one imagined that mixed-use buildings would just have an ATM on the ground floor or just have two hundred square feet as the retail. No one imagined that that was what we were trying to accomplish downtown. It might be okay in another area, but downtown, that was not what we were looking for. And obviously people's plans fall through and things don't always work out the way they expect. But beyond that, I mean, downtown is in fact a relatively limited space. And so to, to be, I would say that we do, we can insist on, despite market forces, we can insist on saying, if we're going to allow you to build downtown, you're going to have an actual viable retail space on the bottom floor. If you can't figure out how to do that, then you shouldn't be building apartments downtown. And so if that's what people want, and then I'm keep hearing, you know, Thorns Marketplace type idea, of course, used to be a department store, has nothing to do with a new build. But, um, then that should be looked at in terms of that percentage, rather than it feeling like because retail has gone through such a downturn, we just give up. There has to be some way of doing this. So how can we incentivize that means, basically by meaning, if you're going to build apartments downtown, you're going to have something viable on the bottom floor that isn't just an agency of government and that isn't just an ATM and some parking. So I think that that can still work its way through the process and I can hopefully eventually support whatever percentages come up. But I think showing us some choices to make it clear to people what we're choosing between in terms of these percentages would be really helpful.
That's a really good suggestion. We can provide, uh, some layout examples.
Thank you. Mandy Jo?
I found this conversation fascinating. And I'm not sure what to say because we went through a moratorium discussion where people said we needed to stop and think and we're having a discussion about stopping and thinking. But we're also seem to be a lot of people that say, but we need this X without caring whether X is actually financeable, financially feasible. We can modify this however we want, but right now we don't like what we have. Many of us don't like what we have, especially with mixed-use buildings. And this is, to me, better. And, and it can get better during the hearing and I'm not sure what that percentage is, but we can't make it so onerous that we get nothing. If some of us are afraid it's so onerous, we're not going to pass this. We're going to end up and still stay what we have, right? We have to find a medium because we still need housing and we still want retail. And I think we have to find a way to say, maybe things aren't perfect, but are they doable now? And we're a council and we can come back if it's not working or if the retail market changes because suddenly everyone's shopping in town. Then maybe we can come back and modify percentages. It doesn't have to be perfect right now. I think it has to be acceptable and better than what we've got. And that's what I want us as a council and the planning board and the planning department and as CRC looks at it to keep in mind. Is it better than what we have?
Darcy?
Oh, sorry. I just have a question about the process and because Rob had mentioned that, um, that there wasn't, you know, one of the, one of the sticking points between the planning board and CRC was the whole forty, sixty. Um, and so I'm wondering, um, what opinion this, this amendment represents of those two opinions? Is it the planning boards or is it CRC?
Chris or Maureen?
Um, so, so say that again, Darcy. So, uh, I, I, the CRC, I, I believe is fine with the ratio as proposed, uh, being sixty percent, maximum sixty percent on the gross floor area on the first floor for residential use in a minimum of forty percent gross floor area uh, for non-residential on the first floor. Um, I believe that members of the planning board, um, I think they, each of them have different opinions on it. Um, maybe Chris, uh, could refresh my memory of, of sort of the percentage of where the planning board is at with that.
May I speak?
Yes, please, Chris.
So, um, the one person I remember who spoke about this topic was Doug Marshall. And at first he objected to the sixty percent of, um, non, uh, or, excuse me, sixty percent of residential and parking on the first floor. And, um, when Rob and I spoke with him, when we met with him last week, we had a conversation about that and eventually he came around to agreeing with the percentage that we are presenting tonight. I don't remember other planning board members having specific questions about that, but maybe Rob remembers better than I do.
And I also just say, we're not going to resolve whether it's sixty or forty tonight. Just at some point, it's got to go to hearing. Rob, did you have a, or more comment on this?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this may be, um, reflect neither of the board's, uh, opinion on this. And this is the planning department's recommendation. Uh, after our review, hearing the comments, uh, hearing from developers, knowing what we think is best right now to have a bylaw that, uh, doesn't, isn't going to necessarily prevent building. But I, and I wish I had the numbers, but that small list of, uh, uh, buildings that, uh, Chris had in the memo that talked about how small the percentages are, adds up to a significant square footage of, of space that wasn't built in those buildings that this bylaw would require, over twenty thousand square feet. So the, I just want to say again that this would be a really big change uh, in step forward or step in that direction. And I would also like to add that, uh, there's nothing that prevents the planning board from conditioning permits to have a certain type of use or uses in their building. And we did that with, uh, North Square. We, we got really detailed about the type of uses that would be in that building on that first floor and the nineteen thousand square feet. And if the bu- if the planning board or zoning board of appeals wanted to start working in that direction, they certainly could now with the bylaw and the criteria and design standards that they have in those eleven, section eleven and section ten point three eight, uh, that Maureen pointed out a couple of times.
Mandy Jo, did you have anything to, sure, did you want to, um, clarify on regarding CRC?
I did. Um, CRC hasn't taken any position on the proposal in front of you tonight at all. In fact, CRC members didn't agree on language potentially and didn't necessarily agree with the planning department's proposal, um, on certain issues. In fact, my notes say from the last meeting, it's really complicated and we all know what a mixed building is, but we're having a really hard time defining it. Um, and could we give developers flexibility regarding first floor if there's a minimum commercial use somewhere else? And so what CRC basically told the planning department is, it's ready to go to the council for referral for a hearing so that we can deliberate on actual language and then make a decision on the actual language the planning department thinks is best. So it's, it's not a CRC language. It's a planning department language with CRC saying, we're ready to see the actu- we're ready to deliberate and make a recommendation on whatever language is presented because things are just not changing very, the, the, the drafts CRC was seeing, we're not changing substantially between drafts. And so CRC said, we're down to, you know, CRC's opinion and, and planning board has a, a different opinion potentially. CRC was saying, we don't need to see this again because it's just not changing. And while we might not agree with the planning board, it's ready for that hearing because it's their proposal. And we can discuss then at the hearing and recommendation stage whether we like it, whether we don't, whether we recommend changes or not at that time.
I'd like to urge that we move on. Rob, did you have any, Evan, any other comment? Rob, you have your hand up. No. Shalini, any other final comment?
Yeah, I was, hmm. Okay, so I think what I want to say is that why we don't have retail, there's so many reasons. A couple we've shared already, the other is the high cost of rent. And the cost of rent is high because we have high property taxes in Amherst and having more increasing a property tax base, which is why we want a little more concentration of buildings and new development is that it will lower down some of the property taxes and makes it, because I, I personally cannot afford, even as I would much like to, but I can't afford. And I've heard that from many restaurants that actually go to East Hampton is that the cost of rent is cheaper there. So, so there's that. And even Northampton is twenty dollars per square foot and we are like up to thirty-two dollars per square foot for a year. So it's really expensive. The second thing I would recommend is like, or not recommend, if you had an economic development director or somebody, if, since we don't have a director, um, if we could actually go and speak to retailers and people who left, like maybe Blue Marble and other stores that left, what were the reasons for leaving? Or go to, you know, and try to find out from retailers who want to come, what's stopping them from coming? So actually getting feedback on, in, rather than all of us sitting here and to, you know, hypothesizing, it would be helpful, I think, to, uh, and I'm sure like Rob and other staff already have a lot of experience. So I, if anything, I would defer to them and rely on what their experience is and what they're proposing, rather than me deciding, sitting here, that this is what it should look like.
Thank you. Andy?
And, uh, following up on what, uh, Shalini just said, you know, affordability of rent for retail has been an issue for a long time. And I think it has kept a lot of small retail out. What some of, uh, people were hoping for at the time we started really having serious talks about mixed-use buildings many years ago is that the attraction of building the apartments would, um, encourage, uh, builders to, developers to develop buildings that would then have retail space that they would put lower rent on simply because they, uh, were going to gain the benefit of having the upper floor rental um, income and that, that was the incentive, uh, was to get those apartments built. I don't know why that hasn't worked out for us, um, here. Um, I don't think we need to answer or even address it tonight, but it is something that, uh, that are in the process, um, that CRC and the planning board can talk about. Now, I hope they do.
Thank you. I'm going to read the motion and look for a second to refer the proposed amendments to zoning bylaw, section three point three two five. Mixed-use buildings to the planning board and the Community Resources Committee for hearings held no later than September one, twenty twenty-one and for written recommendation and an explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan for the planning board to the town council and to the Community Resources Committee no later than twenty-one days after the planning board hearing and for the Community Resources Committee to send a written recommendation to the town council and to submit all materials to the Governance Organization Legislation Committee for review, clarity, consistency and actionability within sixty days of the hearing held by the Community Resources Committee. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Then I'm going to start with Mandy Jo.
Hi.
Dorothy, Pam? I keep, I get, no. Evan Ross? George Ryan?
Hi.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Steve Schreiber?
Hi.
Andy Steinberg?
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz?
No.
Shalini Baumil?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Hi.
Patty Angeles?
Hi.
Darcy Demont?
No.
And Lynn Griesmer, is it my eye? So the vote is nine in favor for opposed. No abstentions and nobody absent. We're going to move on to parking and let me just say, in one night, we are not going to resolve parking. I mean, it's never going to get resolved, but do we have comments on this specific bylaw? Kathy?
It's a question, um, about internal consistency. If a, a single house or a townhouse needs two parking places and an apartment which has four bedrooms in it needs fewer, only needs one per apartment unit, is the way I read it. How, when I'm looking at the bylaw, how did you come up with the numbers? You know, in terms of thinking about, um, the size of the place. And the, I also heard, um, that at a recent planning board meeting when, uh, the developer was putting in, asking, coming, asking for more housing and units on Main Street, they, the developer said he can only do it, he had to- They, the developer said he can only do it, he had to build a lot of parking spaces because for every bedroom there had to be a car because that's what the demand was for it. And he made, that was from the business person. So I'm just wondering where, as you were thinking about the multiple units, cars per unit, as you started moving away from a townhouse, a triplex, a single family to apartments, what led that thinking?
Yes.
So it all has to do with the context in which the building is located. You know, a single family house out in Echo Hill might need two parking spaces because it's on a bus route that doesn't run very often and it's a really long walk to the center of town and to UMass and to Amherst College. But a residential dwelling unit at 462 Main Street, which is, was recently approved by the planning board and is now under construction, probably doesn't need two parking spaces per dwelling unit. It's got 24 units. It's got some other kinds of uses on the property and I think they ended up with 32 parking spaces. So the part, the planning board debated long and hard, I'd say hours on that particular topic. And because that property at 462 Main Street is on a bus route, it's in walking distance of the university and Amherst College and downtown. It's, you know, it's, it's just well situated. They determined that it didn't need two parking spaces per dwelling unit, but there wasn't any guidance in the zoning bylaw to guide the planning board to have that discussion. So that's why it took such a long time. If there had been guidance in the bylaw like we're proposing now, I think the planning board could have reached a decision much sooner. So that's what this is offering. It's offering guidance to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals to take into consideration certain things to determine exactly how much parking does something need. And we're limiting this to mixed use buildings, apartments and supplemental dwelling units because those are the three things that we've been studying closely recently.
Maureen, did you have something to add?
Yeah, and just to add, you know, it, for the apartments, mixed use building and supplemental dwelling units where the proposal says adequate parking shall be provided for each dwelling unit, that doesn't say one parking spot or zero parking spots. It could say, it's up to the discretion of the board for the development before them to determine what that is. And with that guidance of specific factors that they would be reviewing, they would make that determination. You know, the zoning board of appeals has previously found that, you know, two parking spots per dwell, they've found that a development needs to provide a car per bedroom. And so that would be an instance that the, that the board found that the adequate parking is not zero, not one. It's by the bedroom per, the bedroom per that, how many bedrooms in that particular unit. And so that, this would give that board discretion to determine what that number is. And so as yeah, Chris said, these specific factors, you know, looking at the analysis of analysis of traffic import, impact reports, that proximity and connectivity, connectivity meaning is there sidewalks connecting the development to the, you know, the bus stop down the street or, or things of that nature and looking at, you know, is, are there buses? Are there alternative modes of transportation? So again, it is providing guidance. I would also like to add that, you know, according to to the trip generation handbook, you know, by uses, single family homes do provide the most daily trip generations compared to multifamily uses. They historically provide fewer, significantly fewer trips per day. You know, probably largely because single family homes are typically in your outlying areas of town, unlike mostly you see mixed use buildings and apartments in more denser areas along bus routes and the nature. And then to add, you know, you know, we also want to be reflective of, of our carbon, uh, carbon, carbon emissions. And so, you know, reducing the amount of parking, particularly for places that are walkable in, in downtown by bus stops, et cetera. You know, adds to, to, you know, the sort of larger thing, larger scale of things of that we should be thinking about is finding ways to reduce our carbon emissions.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I agree with reducing carbon emissions and I recommend electric cars. I will never forget living in Ithaca, New York with no car and walking in the snow day after day after day. That marriage didn't last long and part of it was the weather and no car. I, I just feel we're in such deep magical thinking. The number of parking places should be related to the number of adult people living in the dwelling. So here we have a subdivisible converted dwelling with maybe one or two parking spaces. I live next door to one. There are 16 cars crowding in the lot right now. And so if you let somebody not have parking related to the number of adult people living in that apartment, then you're saying, okay, well, they can park in all the streets around and people can't get out of their driveways. And there's a garage, there's a public parking lot. People can't find a place to get parked to go to the library. You're just passing it on, shuttling it around and pretending that we don't need parking. And why not a sensible rule that relates it to the number of adult people? A family with children doesn't need two parking spaces if one car will do. But for adults living separately or 16 young adults living in a building are not going to be just fobbed off onto some evaluation which will work towards the benefit of no parking. Because that's where this town is going. And you wonder why people don't want to shop and come downtown because there's no parking.
Thank you. Alyssa?
So it's my understanding and I know better by now with zoning, but what we call subdivisible converted dwellings are not the single family house next door to me that has been converted into a student rental by an LLC. That hasn't actually been officially subdivided or converted. It's still a single family home. We do have a rental registration system that says you should have a parking plan, but if nobody reports it, then nobody knows about it. So
You're wrong.
I just want to be clear that we're, I want to understand, and I mentioned this earlier when I was obviously out of turn in terms of when we were talking about parking, is as this goes forward, to explain better why you drew the lines between the different kinds of units. Because I don't know why you're treating a duplex differently than a supplemental dwelling unit. I think you're making a lot of assumptions about who lives in these spaces and how many people live in these spaces. And we have all these complexities associated with that and the fact that we don't go around knocking on people's doors to see who's in a building. So I just would like to be clear on what the point of that is in terms of dividing it between different types of dwellings. But in terms of the overall intent, I really appreciate the overall intent in terms of providing guidance. That makes a huge amount of sense to me. I just hope you can work out a little bit of an explanation in future as to why you've divided up the different types of dwellings and said, well, we need flexibility for apartments, but we don't need flexibility associated with duplexes because that doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Yeah. Just trying to think of what my comment was. Won't you come back to me?
Thank you. Evan?
Chris has her hand up. I defer to her if she wanted to respond to Alyssa.
Chris?
So yeah, I did want to respond to Alyssa. The reason that we peeled off apartments, mixed use buildings and supplemental dwelling units is because those are the things that we're studying right now. And so this parking, this change in parking grew out of that study. We haven't been studying single family, two family townhouses and whatever else is in that first category. So we didn't feel really like it was the right time to start to change those parking requirements. We're just changing parking requirements related to the things that we're already studying.
Thank you. Darcy or Evan?
Yeah, I wanted to provide a little bit of context for this conversation. Back when I was chair of OCA a decade or so ago and really struggling to recruit for planning board, I had a really great conversation with the then chair of planning board at the time about whether or not the length of planning board meetings could be a deterrent to recruiting new candidates. Because as we know, planning board meetings can go on for quite a long time. And as part of that discussion, we got into, well, what, why do these meetings go so long? What, what does the planning board get hung up on? And immediately her response was parking. And, and the first thing she said was, you know, we have this requirement for two spaces. And some people get really hung up on that, even if we're looking at a building that's mostly one bedroom or mostly studios. And so because we have that number we fixate on, and because we don't have any real guidance about when we can go away from that number, we get into these really long drawn up debates. And so she said, at that time, and of course, this was before the council zoning priorities had said, you know, if there's any zoning change the council could do to help the planning board, it would be to take a look at that two space requirement, to provide greater flexibility to the planning board and to provide greater guidance to the planning board. And so I think that, to me, that's why I was really excited when the planning department brought this forward because I think that this is something that will actually help the planning board up quite a bit into deliberations and maybe, maybe reduce the length of their meetings going forward so that it won't seem like such a bear for for them. And then we can figure out how to do that with our meetings.
I thought, I thought that was where you were going to go. Thank you. Darcy?
Yeah. I feel like I don't know, know enough about this issue. Like we haven't had enough time to talk about it, but I did wonder whether the provision in the proposed amendment that says the owner shall provide adequate parking does include providing no parking. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that it does, that it, that a decision could be made that no parking is adequate considering the proximity of the building to campus or, or whether it's on a bus line or whatever. And if so, would the residents of that building be able to purchase a town parking permit? Is there anything in the?
Is there any comment from Chris or, yeah, Chris?
So one way of limiting the amount of parking that's required is to have something in the lease that says you don't need to have parking and you can't have a car. If the applicant, the landowner, you know, doesn't want to provide parking for a tenant, then he would have a lease that says, well, tenant, you can't have a car because there's no parking for you. I understand that the people who are reviewing the parking requirements are looking at the possibility of limiting the amount, the number of residential parking stickers that can be gotten. And so that this is a part of a, it's, it's the start of a conversation. Sean Mangano has said that he would kind of spearhead a look at the parking requirements. And one of the things they're going to be looking at is how many residential parking stickers do they want to allow? And so it's, it's part of a conversation. It's not really part of zoning, but it's part of an examination of parking requirements throughout town.
Could I just have a follow up, Lynn? So you are acknowledging that this amendment would allow buildings that do not provide parking.
If the landlord said specifically that parking wasn't allowed and the person couldn't have a car, then I think that the permit granting authority could say, okay, well, you don't need to provide a parking space. So it's on a case by case basis. It's not across the board and it is possible that a board could decide in this particular case of say a supplemental apartment that's close to the university, that's on a bus route, that they don't need to provide parking for that supplemental apartment.
Steve? I'm sorry.
So one, one, one answer to Council Demont's question is Olympia Place. So Olympia Place is outside of the downtown parking district and the developers asked to not provide parking for the reason that there was a UMass parking lot right across the street. And so the planning board agreed to that because that was basically win-win. The building was a actual private dorm in an RF district. And so it had to be only students. And because they were primarily UMass students, they were eligible for UMass parking stickers. But I also want to make another comment that there was minimum parking requirements, but then there's also maximum parking requirements. So one of the discussions that we used to have on the planning board, Council Ross, that parking's fun to talk about. Are, should, like the case of the College Street one, do you want to use parking as a proxy for how many tenants are actually can be there? So if the developer says, I need one parking space for, for bedroom, the special permit granting authority could and should be able to push back. Say, no, we think you should actually have fewer parking spaces because the more, if you, if you open up to too many parking, then you're going to also open up to overpopulation or basically the possibility of this having more tenants than it's designed for. But also having maximum parking. Parking is a, we, we got a very thoughtful letter today about basically the high cost of requiring parking. And but parking is, is, it's not an easy issue because requiring off-street parking on someone's property means that you can't use that property for something else. And if we're talking about, say, the housing crisis or whatever, then really the choice becomes parking or apartment units or, you know, housing units. So, yeah, so I'm not sure that we've gotten there, you know, with the proposal before us, but we certainly have. I'm glad that the discussion is happening, but I think we need to talk about minimum and maximum parking.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Extremely briefly, just to follow up, and I don't want to mischaracterize what Ms. Brestrop said, but when she said, how many residential stickers do they want to allow? It's not up to the developer. It's not up to the landlord. It's not up to the permit granting authority. It's up to the keepers of the public way. How many residential parking permits we want to allow? So we look forward to getting a proposal about that based on actual data, which we haven't seen for many years. But it's going to be up to the town council, how many residential stickers they want to allow because that's on the public way.
Thank you. Shalini?
And this is not a zoning question, but I heard Chris talking, saying that Sean is going to be pursuing that inquiry about parking permits. And so the question, which doesn't have to be answered today, is can we increase the cost of the parking permits to people living downtown?
That's being, that's part of what's being.
That's part of what is being, okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to read the motion. Look for a second. To refer the proposed amendments to zoning bylaws, section 7.00, parking and access regulations for dwellings including apartments to the planning board and the community resources committee for hearings held no later than September 1, 2021 and for a written recommendation and X, X, explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan from the planning board to the town council and to the community resources committee no later than 21 days after the planning board hearing and for the community resources committee to send a written recommendation to the town council and submit all materials organization and legislation committee for review of clarity, consistency and actionability within 60 days of the hearing held by the community resources committee. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further question or comment? Then I'm going to begin the vote with Dorothy Pam.
No.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
No.
Shalini Bonin?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
No.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye, Mandy Johanniki?
Aye.
Votes nine to four, no abstentions and no absences. Chris? Rob? And Maureen, thank you for all your hard work, for your patience with us this evening, and for plowing through these bylaws with us. We look forward to seeing you in the future. Evan, did you have a comment?
Just, just a question, because I brought this up last time, about getting attorney opinion on the vote quantum for all of these. I didn't, I didn't see that addressed in the inclusionary zoning bylaw, or the moratorium in my, or I didn't see the attorney opinion for the inclusionary zoning, I didn't see it in the moratorium one. But I'm, I'm just want to make sure that we are asking that when it goes out for attorney review.
George?
Good point. Evan and I have been in contact with Paul, and he is aware that GOL is asking for all of these, when they go to attorney review, that the attorney give us information on the quantum. And if it doesn't come back with that, then I remind Paul and he sends it again. So people are aware, and they should all be coming with attorney statement on what the quantum is.
And just for Evan, the attorney opinion came with a quantum of, I believe, nine.
And what we try to do is, in the motion sheet, indicate what the required vote is. Any other comment, George? Okay. We're going on to appointments. Appointment that we are going to act on, there's two. They're both town council appointments. The first is the Districting Advisory Board, and I'm calling on George Ryan with regard to that.
Then I'm prepared to make the motion, and then we can have a discussion. I don't know how you want to do this. The reports in the packet, people have read it, I assume, so I don't know anything to say, except I'd like to make the motion.
Do you want to make the motion, George?
I would be happy to do that, give you a break.
Please do.
So move to appoint the following residents to the Districting Advisory Board effective July 1, 2021, for a term to expire June 30, 2022, as recommended by the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee, report of June 28, 2021. For District 1, Mahek Galani and Irene Džovni. District 2, Marilyn Blaustein and Tammy Parks. District 3, Joseph Gordon and Tracy Zaffian. District 5, Peggy Shannon.
Second, Annaki.
Thank you. Is there a discussion or other?
I'll speak to it, Lynn, briefly, but yes, if you don't mind. I think as, as in the report, we were disappointed by the number of candidates, but not by the quality. So we stand behind the, the, the quality of these candidates, and we think they're excellent for the task in front of them. The problem, as we all can see, is there are only seven names here, and there are nine positions. And one district is not represented, which is District 4. We had a candidate for every district when we began, when we were ready to turn to actually making recommendations, but one of the candidates withdrew, and so that happened after the fact. So as I said in my report, I don't know what to do at this point. My personal feeling is that we have seven candidates, they're all strong candidates. They represent a diverse, a diversity of age. We have two students on this, this body. They represent diversity of background, they have, I think, the requisite skills. And this is a time sensitive committee. So my personal feeling, and it's just mine, is that we should go ahead with these seven. And then after that, I, I don't know what we want to do, but, so that's where we're at.
I would like to suggest that, that in fact, we do go on with these seven. There is a daunting task that they need to get ready to do, and they have a limited time to do it in, because they have to come back to the council. At the same time, should additional candidates arise from either District 4, 5, that's CRC, I mean, that GOL at time could entertain additional candidates. Alyssa?
I am uneasy. I appreciate, I agree completely with going ahead and filling the seats that you've got. Yes, get started. I disagree with the idea that we're waiting for someone to show up from District 4. I think we obviously don't have that candidate, we don't have another candidate from District 5. And I think it makes more sense to ask GOL to go back and see if any of the uns, not selected candidates wish to represent. I think it's just as valid to say, oh, well, we aren't going to represent all the districts, as it is for the charter to say, you're going to have nine members. Well, we don't have nine members, we have seven. And so I don't know that our charge is more important in terms of saying we wanted them from all the districts versus, is it more important to have nine bodies, just in case somebody has to drop out, gets sick, whatever happens, because things happen to people? So I agree that we should vote on the seven, but in terms of the next step, I don't think we should just leave it laying there and see if somebody shows up from 4. I think we should ask, that we should make a decision as a council as to what GOL should do next.
Mandy Jo?
I appreciate that suggestion, but I would object to appointing a board that is heavy and lopsided to one particular district, and that suggestion would essentially result in that. And, you know, the charter says from all around town, and if you end up with four people from the same district, and in fact, most of them from the same precinct, that goes against what the charter is going for. So I'd actually prefer to see leaving them open, and continuing to potentially relist the DAB on the bulletin board for those particular districts, to see if we get additional candidates, than to make appointments that are heavy to one particular district, because those candidates happen to exist.
Okay. Any other comment? Darcy?
I hadn't thought of Alyssa's idea, and I think it's a good one. I, I, I kind of doubt that the, the nominees are, are wedded to their, the geography of their districts. And we, we have some really good candidates that weren't chosen. The, the only district that had a contest was one. And I was the only one who voted, can't remember whether I abstained or voted no, but, because I thought Tony Cunningham would really help the group with all of her, you know, her, her expertise and, and data, basically. She's a big data person. I thought she would be extremely helpful to the committee. But, so, yeah, that, that would be up to the council, whether they wanted to go in that direction. But I think she would be super helpful to the committee. And the, the two that were chosen, I'm sure are good, but, you know, she would have been really good.
Dorothy?
I think that when, if there's two districts that aren't represented, that there's counselors from those districts, and that the counselors should do outreach and try to get a couple of candidates to come before the committee. That's, I mean, when they have planning boards in, in the New York City area, people who are elected officials, if they're not, if people don't come forward, they go find some good people to be interviewed. That's my suggestion.
George?
I would be very uncomfortable with a board of nine people, in which four of them come from the same district. And especially when the charge is explicit that is trying to get a, is getting perspective from all five districts. So I think that we would be a mistake to, no matter how excellent the candidates are, and they are fine, they are excellent, to give one district four representatives. We should continue, perhaps, well, we can continue to look and, and reach out for more applicants from 4 and 5, but I don't think we should be giving one district four representatives.
I'm going to suggest the following, that we move on the motion that's been made and seconded, and that then there might be, you know, some other motion, but let's get this done, okay? So the motion's been made and seconded, it's the one that George read, and it was seconded, and I can't remember. Thank you. By Mandy. And so are there any other questions about the motion the way it stands? Not, then I'm going to go to Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Bonin?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye, Mandy Johanniki?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
That is unanimous. I'd like to move that we ask GOL to continue to advertise for specific districts that are underrepresented, and if possible, bring those candidates forward at future meetings. Is there a second? George?
Not a second, Lynn, I'm just not sure that we actually need a motion. I think we just need instruction from the council, which I think is pretty clear. But if someone wishes to make another motion, that's a different story. But that's my opinion, but I think you can just instruct us to, to continue to our search. But, so if someone wants to second your motion, go ahead, but I'm not seconding you.
I'm, I'm more than glad to have it go that way. Alyssa?
I just wanted to be clear that it was from districts 4 and 5. And we can't give them each two, right? I mean, because then the math doesn't work out. We need, we only have two more spaces, so we can't have two of everything. That's just not going to work out, we've always known that. But to advertise for 4 and 5, what I do not want to see, is I do not want to see you bring back somebody from 5 and leave 4 hanging.
We really need to get somebody from 4.
Well, I think we do, but I, I guess I can't really control that. If somebody from 5 steps forward and they want to fill an empty slot, I'm going to bring them to you, unless I'm instructed otherwise by the council. But I agree with you, I mean, we could end up with two from 5, I'm sorry. You're right, we could end up with eight, and, and that's it, because we can't get anybody from 4. But I can't, I, I, is the council telling me that if somebody from 5 comes forward and says, I'd love to serve, I can't bring them forward to you because they're not from 4? I don't think so.
I think we need to advertise for 4 and 5, and you need to bring forward to us acceptable candidates in possible.
Thank you, that's what I will do.
Kathy, further comment?
I just, is, is there, do we have a deadline for this? Is this, it has to be done?
Because they have to report back to us, because we have to then vote on the precincts.
That's what I thought, so if we don't fill those, if George isn't successful, do the seven just go ahead and that's ours?
Yes, my expectation is Sue up there, or her agent.
This group from me, that's all, so this group starts to meet, and then we try to add, add hopefully two people to it, okay?
This group starts to meet, because they have a lot of work to get done, and we hope to add two more people. The other questions or comments, George or Kathy? Yes, thank you, okay. The other motion is for the ZBA, and these were the people that, for which it was not unanimous. I mean, Andy Jo, would you like to make the motion?
I'm going to make the motion, and then after a second, I'll attempt to speak to it. And move to appoint the following residents to the Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Members, effective July 1, 2021, for a term expiring June 30, 2022, Eric Cochran and Karen Winter.
Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Mandy Jo?
So we had three motions, as you saw, two of them went through consent. These are the associate members, just like with DAB, we did not have a group of candidates and applicants that exceeded the number of positions we had. We did exceed the number of positions for full membership that we had vacant, but not for full plus associate. Knowing that at the time, planning board, that the CRC made its recommendation for the planning board, I was instructed as chair to reach out to all the non-recommended planning board candidates to see if they were interested in ZBA. One of those candidates had already applied to the ZBA and filled out an SOI, and one wrote back and said that they were interested, but they couldn't make the interview. And so they were included as a possible candidate. The CRC, prior to formally considering them as a candidate, voted to essentially waive its adopted process to accept that person, which is Ms. Winter, as a candidate. Like the fact that she could not attend an additional interview, she had attended the planning board interview. That vote was not unanimous, that one was a 3-1-1 vote, and that's detailed in the memo. And then after that, the order we voted our motions were the full, were the associate members that are continuing. And then we voted the full memberships, and then this is the next vote. And the vote was four to one with Counselor Ross, who I'll let him speak to, if he wishes to, to his reasons for opposing that motion. But everything's in the memo. And, and I, what I would like to say is, even though if this motion passes, there will be technically four associate members. In a very short while, there will only be two associate members, because two of those members we appointed tonight are really just extensions, so that they can fulfill the, and keep a zoning board of appeals at five members while they finish the hearings they're already serving on. So those are likely to only last a month or two, and one might only last a week or so. So we are still looking at, even after tonight's votes, if they, if this last motion passes, only having, still having two vacancies at a minimum on, you know, on the ZBA going forward.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded, are there any questions or comments? Evan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that my vote against the motion in CRC, and my vote against tonight, is not a reflection in any way of the candidates. And it is a reflection of the process. I simply just don't believe that we should require interviews, but then allow, and then appoint someone who did not interview. I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to be appointing, requiring interview on people, and then appointing others without interviewing them. I understand Ms. Winter interviewed for the planning board, but that is a different body. And so I fully support appointing Eric Cochran, who did interview. I just can't bring myself to support appointing someone who did not interview for the body, even if that person is, is qualified.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Agreed. That person who obviously has many fine qualities may not, just because they interview for one position, even if the questions are similar, doesn't mean they don't have a completely orthogonal view of the other body's work. And so it seems like it would have been exceedingly simple to just say, that's great, we're so glad you're interested, and we're really looking forward to scheduling your interview at a mutually agreeable time, and then we will, we will recommend your appointment to the town council, and everyone will be happy. The idea of having to waive the process, which I at least appreciate that you did a waiver rather than just deciding it by fiat, so that was good, just doesn't make any sense, because it doesn't actually improve the scenario at all. It puts us all in this awkward position, whereas you could have just said easily, we'll come up with a mutually agreeable time, there may not be any other ZBA applicants available at that time, but we can do yours at that time. So I can't vote for it because dumb process, but I'm sure it's a lovely person that will be wonderful.
Dorothy?
I think sometimes we need to replace the word fair with reasonable. The reason that, and I, I think Alyssa's alternate scenario is The reason that, and I think Alyssa's alternate scenario is a very good one. Wait for, have that interview. She was in Berlin, which is why she couldn't come to the interview. But the reason that we voted to waive the process was that we had heard that the ZBA had a lot of work. It was seriously understaffed and it is still understaffed. So that is why that was done. There was a reason and it was in order to help the committee do its process. And I do understand the idea that somebody interviewing for one thing might not be the same as the other. But that was not the reason that the that the vote that wasn't yes was not yes. It was purely on a process matter. So sometimes we do things because they're reasonable. And I don't think, I just really hate to be, I think process is important, but I hate to be straitjacketed by it when it looks like this should be good and we know there is a need.
Sarah?
I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what I always say, which is that process is really important. I think that process, when it comes to town council appointing members of the three bodies that we do, I think it should be the same. And I think that right now there's a lot of deviation in the process and I'm going to vote no tonight because everyone knows where I stand on process when it comes to appointments.
Steve?
So I'm obviously on the CRC and I was voted with a majority for reasons stated by Counselor Pam. But I also think you need to look at what the timing of all of this is. So the timing is that we were supposed to do the zoning board of appeals interviews earlier. And had we done that, then the candidate that we're talking about would have been available if we knew that she was interested. Also, we were at a time that we went from Zoom only to face-to-face only. So it was a very confusing part of our history. The combination of going from Zoom to face-to-face, back to Zoom. The fact that this candidate had a vacation or whatever it is scheduled out of town. And we should, I'm thankful that she was interested in the zoning board of appeals position. I got everything I need to know from her from the planning board interview. I think she'd be an excellent candidate. I don't think, I don't think we should let our process get in the way of recruiting great candidates. So I'm standing by my vote and I hope you'll join me in voting yes.
The motion's been made and seconded. It requires a majority of vote. And so I'm going to start with Evan Ross?
No.
George Ryan?
Ah, yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
No.
Charlie Bonin?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Greysmer is a yes. Mandy Johanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Vote is ten in favor, three opposed, no absence, I mean, no, no abstentions.
No, I think it's nine to four.
I think you're right. Thank you. It is nine to four. Flip my page. Nine to four. Thank you. Steve, you still have your hand up. Is there a reason? Yes, not. Okay. Going on to committee and liaison reports. Mandy Joe, CRC?
Nothing to add to tonight.
It's been a zoning night. Kathy?
I put a report in very late on the elementary school building committee. So I'm not going to repeat what it says other than to say the process is now moving. And we put out a press release on Friday to talk about the next steps. And a copy of that is in the report that I sent in. We're meeting this Thursday at noon. Where, at which point we will be reviewing the comments we got back on the request for services for designer from MSBA and we need to review and make the edits that they're asking us to make and get it back to them on Thursday. That's our deadline if we are to make a panel meeting in September. So at the same time, the other thing that I think people should be aware of, because I didn't know, but Mike Morris alerted me and we will talk about it on Thursday. The school committee has a timeline for making a decision of moving the sixth grade up to the middle school. And that is in the packet and that was proposed last week and that's an active discussion. And that interacts with the building project because we have one of two models that was a study model. One is grades K through five, a consolidated school that would bring us down from three to two. And the other is a K through six and we would have, continue to have three schools. So that decision on the sixth grade will have a direct impact on what we're studying and going back and forth. So those two things are both moving right now. And we're meeting on Thursday at noon to review the comments we got back.
Thank you. Finance committee, Andy? Oh, I'm sorry. Mandy Joe, you have a question?
Yes, I did. And this can be addressed in another report at some point. If the school committee affirmatively decides to move the sixth grade or say they affirmatively decide not to move the sixth grade, that obviously, as you said, affects one of the study models. And does that mean we'd only be studying two things or even potentially one thing? And so how does that affect the MSBA's requirement to actually have three study models? If in theory, the school committee has removed one or even two of them as an option affirmatively one way or the other. It doesn't have to be addressed tonight, but maybe.
I can answer pretty quickly. They, they will require us to look at a renovation only, a renovation, an addition and a new school. Regardless whether, so if we have the two possible study models, Mandy, we would have to look at six options because we have two different student populations. And we are also looking at which, is it the Wildwood side or the Fort Rivers site? You know, so we will have at least three that will be, will have to be looked at thoroughly. So it's not just, maybe we'll look at them. So this will limit that, but not turn it down to just one.
Okay, so, so can I, can I just restate my understanding? If the school committee decides to move the sixth grade to the middle school, we'll still have three options, but they will all be a K-five option of a consolidated school. But one would be a renovation of Fort River only consolidated. One would be a renovation addition of, I guess, Fort River consolidated and the other one would be an all-new build consolidated? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. And it's not necessarily on the Fort River site. So it could be on the Wildwood site. And we would have to, we will have to have a back and forth with MSBA because that decision, when, since that, we had not yet made that decision, we got these two studied, we would have to alert them of, of that, that decision. So yes, it's, it's, it's several, it's more than one moving part. Yes.
At what, I want to ask a question, Kathy. Again, it's not to be answered tonight, but at what point does the town council weigh in on site or don't we at all?
Paul, you know, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. What we're going to try to do is give many opportunities to, to, to be weighing in. But I don't think the council itself has to vote on that selection. I mean, we could decide we want to bring it to a vote. But, but that, the, the council, the key council vote will be to move forward with the project and how we're going to fund it. But Paul, am I speaking correctly on that?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. It's the school building committee that will ultimately make that decision. But of course, the council is, it's funding and the debt exclusion is dependent on the council.
Reason I ask is because there may be a reason that the council would prefer the use of one site or another. And I, for other reasons, not related to the school. And I just wondered if there is a point where we get to weigh in on that.
Well, I think, I think the school committee and the council definitely want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, no, and I think definitely, and Lynn, it's, we haven't quite talked about the logistics of, you know, what kind of public forum with which groups, but we, we want to do this as openly well before the decision is made. You know, when we get the various kinds of reports back from the engineering study, the design firm, you know, on pluses and minuses. And there's been some, I'll just say one more sentence. MSBA ran a fantastic webinar that I only could go to half of it, but it was demystifying net zero. It had elementary schools, but one of the issues that several towns grappled with is which site could do which, depending on solar and general thermal. So, so going into the site selection was the geotechnical kinds of issues, at least as, as parts of the information on making decisions.
If you had a link to that, if it was taped, it would be really nice if that would be shared.
Well, the unfortunate thing was they don't tape it. They don't do a recording of it. And they had schools and designers presenting and showing you slides. So I said, can you, can we get slide sets? And they said, no. So it was like, I said, well, I, I took really good notes, but I didn't realize I had to, you know, take.
Really is, that is very unfortunate. Thank you. Any other questions on the school? Okay, then Finance Committee, Andy?
Yes, last week, the council referred to the Finance Committee, the question of a process for the allocation of our funds. And it asked that we report back at the meeting on July 12, which is a very short turnaround for fairly significant matter. We have a meeting tomorrow and if we need two meetings, we have a meeting a week from me is a Zoom meeting. So we'll see if we can do it in one meeting or we require two. But that'll be decided after tomorrow's meeting.
Thank you. I'm sorry. GOL, George?
Andy, yes, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mandy Joe. I just didn't even look.
Thank you. I don't know whether this is more appropriate for Finance Committee or the Town Manager Report because it relates to the third quarter budget documents that were given to us by the Finance Committee, I guess, or through the Finance Report. Which is, I noticed that in FY20 and FY21, the UMass, I guess it's strategic partnership agreement, there's been no contribution to the town on that, at least in the third quarter reports for either of that. And so I'm curious as to why, since I thought if we didn't have an active SPA, the prior one continued forward. And so why didn't we receive any SPA revenue in FY20 and why haven't received it in FY21? And then if it could be talked about what the progress is on both of them, given that, including whether we're negotiating with UMass right now actively or with Hammer's College.
That's actually a Town Manager question.
So the revenue, so I'll get a report to you on the actual revenue and the report on the third quarter. I want to double check with the comptroller before addressing her report on that. We are, we just today started to talk with UMass a little bit more about the succeeding agreement. We have not, we sort of put that on the back burner during the COVID, but time is relevant now to us, very significantly so as we start that process again with them, because there are, yeah, Alyssa, let's leave it at that.
Dorothy?
This may be the wrong place. Did you want to report on the council of aging?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions on finance before I go to GOL? All right, then GOL?
Thank you, Lynn. Nothing actually to add to the GOL report.
Okay. Town Services, Darcy?
Yeah, we, the committee voted to recommend the adoption of the surveillance technology by law. It came to us for the third time and though that has moved on to GOL next. And so that was progress in that respect. And we also saw a presentation from Veronique Blanchard, who is the West UMass recycling coordinator, something like that, on different solid waste hauling options for the town. So that was very cool and interesting. We're meeting again on July 8.
Any questions for TSO? Okay. Liaison reports, George? Did you have one? Dorothy, did you have one?
Yes. Brief one. Hold on just a sec. Let's see. Well, what the, the chair, present chair, Pat Rector resigned. Her term was up and she had served well. A member, Tim Neal, resigned. And at the moment, no one has stepped up to be chair. They also do not plan any summer meetings, but the report from the senior center is they're very busy working, scaling up, getting ready to bring back seniors, to deal with some of their anxiety of being in groups and crowds and to returning to in-person activity as appropriate. And also continuing on with the vaccination project. So that's it.
Paul, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to mention that subsequent to that meeting, Ms. Rector has, is reconsidering her resignation and is talking about leadership issues with the council on aging. So that, that's an ongoing discussion with the council.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I am happy to report as liaison to the Board of License Commissioners that they issued their first four short-term, special short-term alcohol-serving licenses to serve beer, wine and cider on the Common at four upcoming concerts. So please watch for that schedule and see how that works out. They worked very closely together, the bid and the BLC, to come up with some excellent plans. Staff played a huge part in that and everyone's looking forward to that kicking off, having town council having made that part of our bylaw and now it's actually coming to fruition.
Thanks, Alyssa. Are there other comments or reports from any other liaisons? I see none. We have no minutes. We're moving on to the Town Managers Report.
Thank you. Just to follow up with Alyssa's comment about the Board of License and Commissioners doing that, I think that's a really exciting development. And there's, and it's a great partnership to have with the bid in terms of they're, they're willing to say, let's try it, see we're, how we're going to do it. And if it needs to be changed in between, they're, they're open. They're a very good willing partner in implementing that. Because we don't know exactly how it's going to play out, but I think they've done some really good thinking on it. So really good for that to be happening. As you know, it's pretty hot out. It's not Seattle hot for us, but it's pretty hot and we're opening our cooling center at the Banks Community Center tomorrow. Today, we had a vaccine clinic in the afternoon. So the senior center was open to seniors and a couple of people stopped by. But tomorrow and Wednesday, we will have the large activity room available and staffed and things there for anyone who needs to get out of the heat during the day. The vaccination clinics have ended, but vaccinations haven't. We continue to have the Board of Health, the Health Department has been with the mobile markets. They, we, they'll be at the Boulders later in the month, in July. And the fact, the Massachusetts Vax Bus was in town at that Colonial Village at Renew, which is the new name for South Point. And at the Spring Street parking lot, which coincided with the big cultural festival that the bid had sponsored or the cultural district had sponsored on Sunday afternoon. And they, they got about, I don't know, maybe a couple dozen people vaccinated, which is really good. They were with very short notice, very little prep time for us. But the management of the two apartment places, complexes were very cooperative. They were, the management is going door-to-door. offering to babysit for people who had to get their, um, vaccines. It was a really team effort. They will be back in three weeks for people who took the Pfizer vaccines to get the second dose. You have, when you go in, you have the choice of either a Pfizer or the Ju- the one dose Johnson and Johnson. And people at that time can also get the first dose, even if, if they miss this, this Sunday, they can get the first dose, and then they'll, if they take, if they choose Pfizer, they'll be able to go to CVS to get their second dose. So all really positive things, trying to access, uh, provide access to the vaccine to as many people as possible. Uh, you'll see some, um, construction going on in terms of the, uh, East Leverett Road, that which is the extension of the water line into, uh, East Leverett. And that should be getting, be beginning in a couple of weeks. And then the, um, Kendrick Park, as people continue to ask about that. We finally received the delivery of the granite, which is exciting news. There's still, that will be in place, will be meeting, meeting our deadlines to a substantial matter in terms of, uh, our fiscal reporting. Uh, there will still be some work that has to happen in terms of, um, there's some, like, 21 days before, after they put on a certain surface before the next surface can go on, there's certain time periods for that. So probably looking at the third or fourth week of July to have that, um, that facility open, which is really terrific as well. So I think that that's, oh, and, uh, bids are going out. You know, there's a major construction on Route Nine that the State Department of Transportation is doing from, uh, South Pleasant Street to the Hadley Line on North Hampton Road. And we'll be doing some water line work in connection with that. So those bids are going out. We anticipate that that will, that work could happen and begin as early as the fall. And we'll keep you posted on when we know more about that, if there are questions.
Questions. Yes, Dorothy.
Um, I just wanted to commend the, um, Town DPW and the Police Department for the, uh, really incredible rapid response to the big water main break and the heaving of the pavement of Amity Street. It was startling. It was like an earthquake had just raised it up. And, um, it was, um, there's obviously some follow-up work that has to be done, but things brought under control very, very quickly, and I, I think that's a credit to our town government.
And just for the record, I think you were working longer than they were that night. They, they knocked off a little bit before one, but I think you were here till one.
Are there other comments that is our questions of the Town Manager? Okay, then, uh, moving on, uh, just a quick, I did not do a, uh, President's Update, but I do want to mention that, um, on Friday, I was able to go by the picnic for the, um, people who have been helping us in the vaccines, uh, and it just really wonderful and interesting stories and the extent to which they felt, uh, rewarded by being able to be part of the team. It was clearly a cohesive event for many, many people. Um, on future agenda items, I just want to mention a few for next time. Inclusionary zoning and proposed moratorium bylaws will both come up for the second reading and vote. Uh, we will continue to look at which other bylaws may come up, uh, in terms of, like, demolition delay. We will have four items around public way. And, uh, we will have a vote, if we choose, on the first right of refusal regarding the Mitchell property. That's just a couple of the items. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. Are there future agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry, Alyssa.
No, I'm waiting for counselor comments.
Okay, Darcy. You need, you need to unmute, Darcy.
I don't know if this is a comment or a future agenda item, but, um, uh, I was concerned about the comment that we, the public comment that we got today about the ranked choice voting. And, um, just wondering if we can take some kind of action to, to commit to moving forward for this election.
And I'm going to ask the Town Manager to help respond, and also Mandy Jo, who was one of the people who offered public comment. The, um, election, the Joint Committee on Elections held their hearing on, um, Wednesday, the 23rd. Senator Comerford testified. There were about 20 to 30 different items on their hearing schedule. We were just one of them. Senator Comerford testified. Uh, Sen- Representative Dom testified, I testified, uh, Tanya Lee's, the Chair of the, um, uh, Commission testified, and Mandy Jo testified. Um, we have been, I, I totally appreciate the, uh, comments from the earlier, uh, person. However, um, one of the thing, there's a couple of issues that are still remaining very unresolved out there. Number one, um, the reason this thing did not move forward any faster than it did was because of the reorganization that takes place when a new Senate and, and House is seated and the assignment of committees. And that got delayed further than normal, uh, because of COVID. So while he talked about East Hampton, Hampton's rapid move through ranked choice voting, it was through normal times, not during COVID times. The other thing is that, uh, in most recently, I did have a chance to talk to the Town Clerk. Um, our voting machines are on order and they're backordered because of missing pieces or parts. Uh, and so we don't even have that. And when the council discussed this in the past, and which certainly are welcome to discuss it again, the issue of voter education as well as Town Council, I mean, as well as education for, um, the people who work the polls is another issue that the Town Clerk has brought up in the past. It was based on all of that, that we said if it didn't pass by July 1, we would not try to implement it for, um, this fall of November 202022. But if you all want to reconsider that, but I do think we should gather additional data. We are not expecting a readout from the legislature. Uh, we don't have any estimate on that at this point. Mandy Jo, did you have more comment on that particular item? Paul? Did you have additional comment?
Uh, ju- just to, um, I was going to talk about the voting machines that they are requiring the chips like everything else. We are looking at an October to November delivery date for the new voting tabulators that we need, so.
Right. Thank you.
That, that, as I understand it, ends closes the issue, right? Because we can't do it without those machines.
That's correct. So we've been, uh, Darcy, we've been really trying to keep track and push on this. I think we've talked to Senator Comerford and, uh, Representative Dom at least monthly on what the progress is of the ranked choice voting. Um, Mandy Jo.
I have a different issue. Are we ready to move on? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a agenda item of an ECAC charge referral to GOL. Uh, and I'm wondering when that'll be back on the agenda for referral to GOL.
I will put it on the next agenda. Shalani.
Sorry, this is a question for Paul, and that, um, and it's about, we received some emails from residents about the transfer station. Did we ever get back to them? Um, and the question was, uh, when can we get back to pre-COVID, um, arrangement in the transfer station?
Yeah, so, um, I did meet with the DPW Director and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent this morning on this particular issue. The book, the book shed has reopened and the Take It or Leave It has not. And, um, they had concerns about reopening it under the certain same circumstances that it had been before. Um, so I've asked them to go back and to come back with some circumstances. Wha- what are the restrictions that they feel they need to put in? Because it, it's a valuable thing that many residents value, but there is also seen as, um, there were some issues that the staff down at the transfer station had in terms of both traffic parking and, um, people tending to leave all kinds of things there that were really not intended for Take It or Leave It. So basically, it wasn't being monitored well enough, so put in, they want to look at that. I said, if we, if we reopen it, we want to know what the new rules are going to be before we reopen it, so they're going back to do that.
Can we offer the residents some timeline for that?
Sure, I can reach out to them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alyssa.
Are we at counselor comments, or are we still on future agenda?
No, we're in counselor, either one, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to mess up if you're on future agenda still. Okay, so I'm going to give my counselor comment. So, some of you may know that my husband and I closed on our first and only home, a former student rental, just a month before our second child was born. And less than a year later, I realized that with the gracious mother-in-law living with us, I now had the privilege to serve as a representative town meeting member from what was then known as Precinct Three. I am honored that the people of Amherst have placed their trust in me since 1999. First is that 34-year-old new representative town meeting member, the one asking, when's the precinct meeting? And later, through at-large elections for school committee, select board, and town council, especially through spirited contested elections in 2005, 2007, and 2018, never mind the multiple operating and debt exclusion override votes. And I believe the residents of our community continue to value the things I've always worked for. Transparency, honesty, building and rebuilding strong partnerships with constantly evolving stakeholders, and a consistent focus on learning from our municipal history while constantly moving forward. I'm still learning every day about how we can do better, as I have for over 20 years. And one of the things I've learned is that just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And while I certainly could keep doing elective municipal office, as well as providing my ongoing administrative support that no part-time town counselor earning $5,000 a year should really have to do, I think it's time for this new plane we've been building since 2018 to fly on without me. I won't be pulling signature papers Thursday, because for the first time in almost 20 years, I'm not running for reelection. So you've still got me for six months, but the clock is ticking. Thank you for your indulgence.
Alyssa. Thank you. Sarah.
Man, I wish I got my hands up before Alyssa did. It was, uh, quite a bomb there, Alyssa Brewer, but at least since I'm not pulling papers, we can, we can heckle with that new town council together. Um, I actually, since I've made so many popular, uh, comments tonight, I was going to make one more. And that has to do with the Community Safety Working Group. We, uh, heard from the Community Safety Working Group, and then in two meetings, we heard almost six hours worth of public comment, and one of the things that we heard was, and that I've heard from the co-chairs of Community Safety Working Group, is that they would, they have been meeting with Paul, they have been happy meeting with Paul. Um, they've, they and Paul have come to a lot of the meeting, the minds on a lot of things. Um, they are very much hoping that they could get an extension just for two months, so that they could iron out the details of the resident oversight board with consultants, um, to thoroughly look through the APD policies, procedures, and training, and reform just of the whole community with consultants, so that they could continue to build a community trust between town government, underserved communities, and prepare people for the CREST program. I know that the co-chairs have reached out to town counselors individually for their wondering about support on this. And I think one of the things that this has shown is exactly how our charter works and what Town Council can do and what Town Council cannot do. And you, Paul is our executive branch, and we, we can, we can offer advice, you know, and when it comes to certain things, we could strongly say we would like something, but there are certain things that are in Paul's purview. Um, so, and I, and I understand that, I think Paul's doing a really good job and definitely working with people. Um, however, I would like to make a motion tonight. And it would be simply that Town Council would recommend to Paul that the Community Safety Working Group's, uh, deadline be extended from September 1st to November 1st, which would just be two months.
Second, that, DeAngelis.
So this is a motion to recommend to Paul?
We can't tell, we, I mean, I don't think Town Council can say, I mean, can we? I don't think we can tell Paul at this point, no, it's his committee. Right, it would just be to recommend that, that if it passes, there'd be a, a majority of us that would hope that maybe that could be a, uh, something that would happen.
Okay.
I guess I have a point of order. Isn't this counselor comments? Can we do, can, can we actually do actual items during a counselor comments?
It would have to be something, no, we don't.
I think it can be considered under items unanticipated.
Yes, it can go under item 14.
I didn't ask.
Are there any other counselor comments? Then let's go on to item 14, and under item 14, a motion has been made and seconded. Are there other comments? Shalani.
Um, I, I would support this motion just because, um, I think, given that we don't have a budgetary deadline, and for them to do a good job of the second part of their charge, and if they are asking for two months to do a good job, then, um, it seems that, I mean, and I would want to hear what might be, I don't know if Paul has any, um, objection, not objection, or any concerns or challenges related to extending that. So I'm, I'd like to hear from Paul if he's willing to and wants to at this point, and of course, you don't have to, but, but because I always want to hear from all the different perspectives. So it sounds like, I mean, I can't underst- I, I can't see any reason why they shouldn't be given the extra time to do a good job of, if that's what they need. Unless there is some concern, and I would want to know what the concern is. Thank you.
Would you like to comment?
I'd rather have the counselor's comment first.
Okay, Mandy Jo.
I'm also going to support the motion. Um, that won't come as a surprise to Paul. I think I've emailed him at least twice on this matter, asking him to do the extension. And I'm going to support it for two reasons, well, for a number of reasons. I won't, you know, everything Sarah said. Um, but the Community Safety Working Group had two items to do, a part A and a part B, and their part A took longer, which means their part B was unreasonably shortened because part A took longer, and they couldn't move to part B when they thought they could. And so a two-month extension to continue the work of part B, um, to sort of make up for the time they couldn't be working on part B when they were expected to be working on part B, makes sense. Um, you know, so that's, that's one of the reasons. And the other is, we want them to do a good job, and it's something that they've said they need, and I think we need to respect that.
Alyssa.
So this is extremely fraught, because we get huge amounts of criticism for saying anything about the Community Safety Working Group, other than, thank you very much. And so I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that this was brought up as unanticipated. It's not unanticipated. We were each solicited by the co-chairs of the committee. We could easily have added this to an agenda. It's not time-sensitive. I completely object to acting on this tonight as unanticipated. It's only unanticipated because it wasn't brought to the Chair, to the President, to put it on an agenda, unless, of course, the President refused, in which case it also wasn't unanticipated. So I'm really frustrated by this. That being said, if the council is going to go ahead and decide to act on this tonight, I want to make it clear that I don't think the Town Council ever anticipated there was going to be a period of a second consultancy. I thought that we were assuming that the Community Safety Working Group, in working in partnership with all the different connections they've made through the community during their work, that they were doing the review for part B on their own as committee members, that there was no intention of hiring another consultant and the ensuing time that it would cause to have to hire another consultant. and the ensuing time that it would cause to have to hire another consultant. So I thought they were simply going to finish their charge based on the information they had. But no matter what happens, as I expressed to the co-chairs, I certainly have assumed that community safety working group members would continue serving, whether it's on the resident oversight board, or working with a body with the DEI director, working on the two other recommendations that we haven't yet figured out a way to fund, associated with youth empowerment and cultural center, working with the town manager directly on the hiring of the DEI director, et cetera. So I certainly wasn't expecting community safety working group to disappear. I just expected them to finish that charge so that they could move on to the next implementation charge. I think it's a mistake to spend a substantial amount of time and money on consultants at this point for part B of the charge. And again, I object to doing it this way at this part of the meeting, because I don't see why we wouldn't just do this with all kinds of things at this part of the meeting. But obviously, the council will decide what it needs to do.
Mandy Jo?
I forgot one thing, which is, well, two things Alyssa brought up. My vote is not necessarily in support of consultants, too. I think they just need more time, because it just takes a lot of time. But the second one that I forgot to mention is, there's been an intention or a comment from Paul to myself that he intends to create sort of a standing committee to deal with these issues. But we haven't seen a charge. We don't know where that charge is. We know how long it takes for standing committees to get up and running, especially the appointment process and all of that. And I would not support any break between community safety working group ending and a standing committee started. And since we don't know where that is in the process, and we're now essentially two months away from the community safety working group under their current charge being done, and we know two weeks minimum to advertise, there's no charge yet as far as we know, two weeks to advertise, multiple weeks to interview, then it needs to come to the council for approval of appointments. That can easily take more than two months. And so I'm afraid that we won't, without an extension, have a continuous group working on these issues.
George?
I have to agree with Alyssa. I really object to the way this was brought this evening. It would not have been difficult for the counselor simply to consult with the president and make sure it was on the agenda, bringing it up at eleven-thirty at night after a long and difficult meeting. It seems to me just wildly inappropriate. I also think this is the town manager's call. And he has been working with this group intimately for many months, and it's his decision. And again, I'm also concerned about even more money being spent on consultants. So I mostly object to having to think about this at eleven-thirty when I'm physically exhausted. But, you know, that seems to be the nature of our job. But I do think this is a call for the town manager, and I do share concern about even more expense.
Darcy?
Yeah, I support this. This is something that the co-chairs brought up with me. And I also agree with all the points that Mandy Jo made about how this would also help with making sure that there was a, there was a continuous group that followed through. So I hope that we can vote for this now.
Dorothy?
I always look for occasions when George and I can agree, and I agree with him completely on this issue. This is the town manager's committee. It's his call. And I think that he's the big dog, and I don't think the tail should wag the dog.
Sarah?
In defense of how wildly inappropriate I was, I did indeed send an email and ask Lynn about this last Sunday, and then I sent an email today to Paul and Lynn. I did suggest that this would be a time that I might bring it up. I was not given guidance. And so, I don't know, this is how I did it, and I apologize if people think that.
You don't need to apologize, Sarah.
Sarah, you don't need to apologize, and I'm sorry if I didn't see it as an item for the agenda. I was probably too busy answering too many other emails. So that is my fault for not seeing it as a requested agenda item. Andy?
And Sarah, I'm glad you brought up the issue, too. And I guess I, if I have a problem, and I sort of agree with George in that it would be nicer if it was just brought up tonight, but it was then put on the agenda for next meeting, as opposed to being decided tonight. On the other hand, it's fairly straightforward motion. So if the group decides to go ahead and vote, I will vote. But the, I, I do, as a matter of practice field, that it's not a good idea the new agenda items be brought up at this late in hour. And I would hope we don't run into that as a new regular practice.
I'll try and be brief. So I always value and respect the voices of the council. So however you act on this, I will obviously listen and take it very seriously. The, the community safety working group has been noted as an advisory committee to the town manager. You know, I've had conversations with them. And I think where we were when the charge was written last fall is a lot different than where we are now. The group has really excelled at the work that they have done. Where, I think, you know, where we, where I am now, in terms of where I am, is we've got the CREST program that we're trying to implement on a very aggressive schedule. So moving that forward with our core staff, who are really focused on that, and the co-chairs of the, of the, of the working group, which I'm really pleased by. We have the DEI director position, which has been funded, which was not really anticipated, but that was, came out of their recommendations, which we were able to pivot to. And I think that was a really wise thing for us to do as well. But again, building that job description, doing the recruiting, doing all that stuff. So that's another big effort that has to happen. And then looking at, I've been really thinking hard and working, talking with members of the working group about what is the successor group? We have to make structural change in our organization. And what I'm really interested, I think the valuable focus of energy, especially of this group that has built such credibility in the community, is what is the structural component that isn't a town manager advisory committee, but something that the council should probably create as a substantive committee that's going to carry this effort forward and, and for years. This is not a two-month extension and we're done. This, this is a years-long effort. And I think that that's where I was hoping the council, the working group would really focus. It's like, what's the next step? And, you know, I don't, I mean, I can do a charge, but I think it's much more important for the charge to emanate from the working group, to say, what should this look like? How are we going to set ourselves up to do the work that has to be done? It's a lot, it's, it's a lot of work for our organization, because we're behind. You know, our organization is behind, and we need to start. And I'm just looking at town government, but we're also looking at all of our policies and our, every decision that we make. So that's where my head was going, was, you know, because the, the group has looked at this in a broader context than just public safety. They have, you know, brought in the teen empowerment center and the cultural center. And I think that was really wise, because it, they didn't see community safety or public safety as being a narrow, you know, how police respond to calls. They saw it as a much bigger thing about setting the framework for safety in the community. And, and so I thought reframing it was, was different than what I had anticipated when the group was first set up. I thought it was gonna be relatively narrow, but they felt you can't have that conversation without being, having a broader conversation. And so I thought that was, and that was really not, we really haven't plugged that in. That was a part of the recommendations, and those two items haven't been plugged into anything yet. And so who, where is that gonna land in terms of how that discussed? So that's where I was hoping that the working group, instead of spending a lot of time looking at police policies, which is going to take a long, long time. It's not gonna be done in two weeks, in two months. It's going, because you do need consulting work to support that. And I think the working group expects to have consulting support on this. Last time we did an IFB, which is a process where you choose the low bidder, whatever the, whatever the low bid is, when you do the description of services, you choose the low bidder. And I think the conversation we've had is that we want to do a more longer-term RFP process, where you set, you set what you want, and then you compare prices and you make that judgment. But anyway, we, we had a good discussion on it last Thursday. We'll continue to have the discussion on it. And whatever the council advises me on that, I would take that as, as a valuable thing.
I just want to comment, or ask a question or two, Paul. Am I correct that, that by selection of the community safety working group, two of the members are working with your implementation team?
On, just on the CREST program?
On the CREST program.
That which is part A of their recommendation.
Right, but they, are they actively able to participate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That, that group hasn't really come together yet, but it will. They, they met with Mary Beth last Friday.
Okay, um, I'll wait then. Evan?
I was just gonna ask if the motion could be reread before we vote.
Thank you. So the, the other piece, and I just want to, I, this is one of those moments when I'm stuck between, this is a council, this is a town manager committee, and therefore he comes to us with recommendations, versus the council having all of us talk with members of the community safety working group, and having a council put forward a recommendation, or a motion, and a, and having a second. So I just trying to figure out when the council, when the town manager should come forward versus when we should. So the motion is on the table. It's been seconded. And I'm gonna ask Athena to reread the motion, unless there's additional comments. Shalini?
Yeah, what I'm hearing you say, Paul, is that you're already working with them. They're working with you in the implementation of the CREST. You've come to them, inviting them to contemplate and reflect on their, on the next committee that's gonna form. And you're, and you're saying that you are agreeing to hiring a consultant to help them do the second part of the job, the charge. So why do we need to have this motion? It sounds like we are making you do this. It sounds like you're already doing this. And, yeah.
So, so we don't have agreement. The, the community safety working group and I do not have agreement at the moment in time in terms of whether there's a consultant or not, and because they have an IFB, they have a list of things that need to be done, which I'm in agreement with. And we have had discussions, but we haven't reached agreement, or it's not like we're negotiating or anything. It's not, but I'm sort of trying to be, do, be listening to more about what their needs are. And because this is a group that's, so, and all I can say is that that's a conversation that's ongoing.
No, I don't mean you're necessarily agreeing on the, on the consultant part, but I mean, is there, what I'm hearing you say is that that second part will be involved, and it'll be complex, and will take time. The, the part about reviewing police reform with the work of the, of the consultant. So how are, how are we expecting them to finish by September? Are you expecting them to finish by September? And do you have concerns about extending that to November?
So they can speak for themselves, obviously. You know, I think the second part of the charge was to look at the resident oversight board, which is sort of one thing, but then it also went into more detail about the police policies. And that's really complex, because there's a lot of legal stuff. There's gonna be legal review that needs to happen with it. The police have to, everybody has to be involved with that. And I think that's a, I don't know. So I think if there's a two-month extension, what I would like to know is what does, at the end of two months, what does that look like? What, what does, you know, I think that's an ongoing project that's pretty large. But I just want to understand where, what is the services? What, what would that end look like at that moment in time?
Please unmute. Pat, Pat, please unmute.
I'm sorry, I'm tired. We, the, I believe the motion was to recommend to Paul that he extend the community safety working group's time on November first. And I think that the evolution of the committee and moving into police policy and actually into implementing all of that is, is a step outside of that. So I want to have the motion read and have us vote on whether we're recommending the extension to Paul.
Can I also, I do, I have one other comment, and that is that I've gone back and looked at the charge, and it does seem to me that whoever constitutes the police oversight group is the one that really should be working with the issue of the review of policies and so forth, to versus have this group start it, and then have the next, have the actual next group kind of have to redo it all so that they have a grounding in it. So whether it's a problem with the charge or the understanding of the charge, that's been something I've been concerned about, how that last part of their charge is, is interpreted. So, Darcy?
Oh, I think that was a mistake, putting my hand up.
Okay. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Could we please have it read, Athena?
I have to recommend to the town manager that the community safety working group deadline be extended from September first to November first.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to a vote.
Shalini has the hand up.
I'm sorry, Shalini?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just before everyone votes, so we're all reading the same thing. I know it's late and everyone's gonna be annoyed at me, but can we just quickly just say that the charge on the website does say that it is, does include, ah, the report. Yeah, it says written, the first report, we already know about CREST, and the second one was for police reforms for the Amherst Police Department. So it did, I mean, it does, when the charge was created, that was part of it. And now we're realizing that there is a lot to it. And so I feel that they need to be part of that conversation of what that looks like, because that is what we agreed to do, and if it's changing, then they need to be part of that conversation.
Any further comment or discussion? I'm gonna start with Kathy Chain.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Bonnelm.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Abstain.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Haneky.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam. Abstain. Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
No.
So it's ten in favor, one opposed, and two abstain, and nobody absent. Am I correct, Athena?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion at this time? Seeing none, I'm adjourning the meeting at eleven fifty-five. Please be dropped under twelve.
Oof. Good night.